We'll bring this meeting to order. It is two o'clock PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Here.
Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone?
She's here.
And Chair Camila Bustamante?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. We'll stay standing for our land acknowledgement. The Santa Fe County building is located on the traditional homelands of the Tewa people, known as Oga Poga, the white shell watering place. We honor the land itself with all those who have deep connections to the land, as Santa Fe County is committed to being in relationship with the neighboring indigenous communities and all people who remain stewards of this land throughout generations. We will have a moment of reflection. Donna Chavis and Veronica Rivera from the county's sheriff's office.
Let us take a moment to focus on the work ahead of us today. Being ever mindful of our decisions and in the best interest of our community, we take a moment of silence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, I would like to send my condolences to one of our comrades over at the city of Santa Fe. Councilor Siglindell lost her partner this past week. And this is, we are only as good as our partners and support that we have up here, and we all know this up here. And my heart aches for Sig and for our community at whole. And so if we could all send our love and blessings to her and remember Maria with fond memories. So, thank you.
Let's have a moment of silence for Councilor Siglindell. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, everyone. Be seated. Manager Schaefer, do we have any changes to the agenda as provided?
No, Chair Bustamante. There are no recommended changes to the agenda as presented today. I would just note that the initial agenda for today's meeting was posted last Tuesday, and the amended agenda was posted Friday afternoon at approximately 4:10 PM, which is in excess of 72 hours of today's meeting as required by the Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. If there are no changes to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Johnson, a second by Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. The agenda has been approved. Years of service, retirements, and new hire recognition. The county manager's office, Manager Schaefer, you are on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. Actually, going to do things in reverse order. I'm going to start by recognizing our new hires, mention our retiring team members, and then go backwards in terms of years of service. We have three employees who are recognizing significant milestones with the county of 20 and 25 years. And so I'm going to invite those employees to come up when we get to that order of business so that they might take a picture with the board to commemorate those milestones. To start with new hires, we had, in the, I believe, Administrative Services Division of the Public Works Department, Melinda Martinez. In our Corrections Division, we had two detention officers and a reentry specialist, Chantel Cota, Joshua Rivera, and Joshua Trujillo. In the county manager's office, we welcome an accounting tech senior, Michael Montano. We have several individuals in the Health and Human Services Department, aka our Community Services Department. That's Charity Valdez and Noah Sheldon. In Public Works, Devin Urban joined our team. In the Sheriff's Department, Isaiah Romero joined as a deputy cadet. Also in our Corrections Department, we have a certified medication aide, Norma Blay. And in our Land Use Department, we have a senior planner and development review specialist, Leanna Rodriguez, and Carrie Tremblot. And in the county manager's office, in our Emergency, Office of Emergency Management, Angelina Basile joined the team. Two additional employees in the Public Works Department, John Jimenez and Alan Ruiz. And two emergency communication specialists, three, joined the RECC, Waleed Amini and Ruth Wyatt. So we want to welcome all of those full-time employees to the county. Finally, I wanted to briefly mention that we are coming to the end of our eight-week student internship program that we participate and put on in partnership with the New Mexico Public Education Department. So I'm going to briefly mention those interns, and I look forward to spending some time with them on Friday as we conclude and wrap up their internship. Navaya Apadaca, Caleb Blay, Isabel Cordova, Eva Eklund, Isabella Raza Luhon, Genesis Gallegos, Benjamin Gallegos, Jose Garcia, Dylan Garcia, Antaeus Luhon, Jasmine Monzeneras, Nathandrew Mason, Aaron Mendez, Nathaniel Montoya, Alyssa Perez, Madeline Rodriguez, Sierra Salazar, and Emma Spinarco. I look forward to, again, hearing their feedback on our internship program and hopefully learning that their time spent here at the county has sparked, at least for some of them, an interest in public service. So that does it for new hires. Relative to retirements, we had two individuals retire from county employment effective at the end of June. They were Larice Griegego from the Housing Division and Bobby Montoya from the Fire Department. We wish them the best in the next chapter of their lives. In terms of significant continuous employment anniversaries and recognition, Brian Olachea from the County Treasurer's Office is celebrating 10 years of service with the county. And Matthew Montoya in the County Assessors' Office is celebrating 15 years of service with Santa Fe County. We thank them for their continuous commitment to our organization and community. Finally, we have three individuals that are recognizing 20- and 25-year anniversaries with the county. First, at 20 years, Chris Narvise in the Fleet Division of the Public Works Department. Please come forward, Chris. Want to congratulate you on your continued service. In our fire, the Fire Prevention Unit of the Fire Department, Renee Nix. At 25 years. And also celebrating 25 years of continuous service with the county, Jose Rodriguez Jr. If you could gather around and take a picture. Would appreciate helping commemorate these significant milestones with these three employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. And I know that the Commission sincerely have, or have some sincere words to share with our recipients and everyone who started. I'm going to go ahead and start with just a boatload of gratitude because when you sign up to work with Santa Fe County, you sign up to be in service with the community. And for those of you who are new, you will learn very fast that we're responsive to those people who pay for our ability to be here in ensuring that we have a civil and comfortable community that really takes care of all of us. And each and every one of you have a role in that. That being said, there are also the three that we're acknowledging, their top-notch work. So thank you to them as well. So if we can hear from the Commissioners, we'll just start with whoever wants to say something to our group. Commissioner Green?
Sure. You know, generally thanks. This is an amazing group that we have here. And the folks that can spend their entire career, it's amazing. The dedication, and it's appreciated the dedication that they have to Santa Fe County and our communities that we represent north to south. And so thank you so much for the time and energy and dedication.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank individuals who really spend time working with, in the departments and by extension, in the community. You know, Santa Fe County is a large place, and we have a big staff. And when people dedicate years of their lives to community service and the work, the good work of the county, it's extremely important. You know, it's hard to understate, it's hard to overstate the importance of expertise and people who really know the ins and outs of a department. So I really appreciate long tenure. Thank you.
Commissioner Kakari Stone?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. First, I want to start with our summer interns. A shout-out to you. County Manager Schaefer mentioned that it sparks, we hoped it sparked interest in public service, but you also spark new energy when we're surrounded by you and you come into the space of where we work. And you have new ideas, and you're starting your career. So I wish each of you well, and we hope that you'll be future county commissioners, county managers, all the roles that public service plays. And on that note, on the other end of the spectrum, when you retire, you're not retiring your life's work. I hope that each of you takes stock in the impact that you made. And people can thank you for your service and recognize you, but only you can show pride in all the work you've done. Only you know the journey you've walked. So I just want to thank you and for all the other team and staff that make public service about our communities. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hughes?
Yes, I'll just say thank you for all your service and everything. And I echo everything that other Commissioners said. Thank you.
Thank you all, and thank you all for your service, your continued service. Onto our next agenda item, E, I, I'm sorry, I. Employee of the Quarter.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. I'm going to identify and read a short blurb concerning each of the employees who have been nominated for Employee of the Quarter. As I do so, I would invite them to come up to the front of the chambers. And then when I'm done doing that, I'll announce the award recipient for Employee of the Quarter and again ask the board to help commemorate their achievements through a photo. First person we want to acknowledge is Danny Calsa. Danny has demonstrated exceptional performance in contract negotiations with engineering firms by carefully reviewing and negotiating down cost proposals to ensure fair pricing for design services. In just over a year with the county as a procurement specialist senior, he has successfully completed more than 40 procurements, including requests for proposals, invitation for bids, contract negotiations, and change orders supporting several major projects. His strong negotiating skills and leadership have positively contributed to both his individual responsibilities and team efforts within the Procurement Division. Thank you. Thank you, Danny. Next person we want to acknowledge is Genevieve Heron from the Emergency, from the RECC. She is employed there as an Emergency Communications Specialist II. She is dedicated and compassionate, Emergency Communication Specialist, who consistently goes above and beyond for callers and colleagues. Genevieve remains calm and supportive in high-stress situations, recently assisting during a critical medical call by calming a distressed caller and gathering key information. Genevieve is also an enthusiastic trainer, helping new dispatchers grow with patience and positivity. Her caring nature and commitment make her an invaluable part of the team. Want to also next recognize Ignacio Dominguez of the Fire Department. Ignacio demonstrated exceptional dedication and leadership this quarter by leading key projects such as the Santuario de Chimayo Pilgrimage, the Community Wildfire Defense Grant Submission, and five wildfire mitigation events. Each required careful planning and collaboration. Despite those demands, Ignacio consistently met deadlines, supported his team, and maintained high-quality performance. His contributions have had a meaningful impact on the agency and the communities that it Next nominee is Joseph Vehill from the Public Works Department. Joseph is a maintenance technician. He consistently shows dedication and resourcefulness in handling maintenance and emergency issues. He successfully repaired a badge access system without outside help and quickly responded to a water leak by removing floor drains to prevent damage. His proactive approach saves time and reduces costs for the county. His willingness to take initiative and persist through challenges reflects his strong work ethic and commitment to maintaining safe, functional facilities. His efforts have made a significant positive impact on day-to-day operations. The next employee we want to recognize is Pablo Montano, also a maintenance technician with the Public Works Department. Pablo consistently shows dedication by adjusting his schedule to complete projects and to assist county customers outside regular hours. He communicates clearly, clarifies his understanding of request, and goes beyond his duties to support colleagues and departments. He has responded promptly to water leaks, working extended hours to ensure repairs hold, and recently learned to operate the skid steer loader to manage rain runoff debris. His proactive approach and willingness to take on new challenges contribute significantly to the efficiency and success of county operations. Pablo's commitment and versatility, excuse me, make him an asset to the county. Also from the Public Works Group, Tani Baca, who is an administrative assistant. She continues to provide valuable support beyond her former front desk role by assisting with phone and in-person interactions and training new staff in her previous duties. She has contributed to improving hiring productivity at Public Works by implementing new policies and has developed a comprehensive hiring process report that tracks key metrics for the department. She also regularly covers the front desk during staff meetings, ensuring uninterrupted workflow. Her ongoing dedication and proactive efforts have made her an essential resource for both her team as well as management. Finally, from the Community Development Department, we have William Donahue, a Sustainability Specialist. Will has quickly made a strong impact as a Sustainability Specialist. His collaborative and thoughtful approach enhances teamwork on every project. Will is taking the lead on key initiatives, including energy management software implementation, grant writing, and guiding the county's electric vehicle transition. He also played a crucial role in the county's successful greenhouse gas reduction reporting. His dedication and leadership have already contributed significantly to the county's sustainability efforts. Just before we announce the award recipient, just want to say a few words about what this group represents. You know, first, it really does celebrate the diversity of the county's workforce in every sense of that word, to include the very diverse functions and work that our county employees perform on a day-to-day basis. And regardless of what any individual's calling is, it takes everybody to serve our community and to make the organization reach its full potential. So I wanted to acknowledge and celebrate that diversity. Secondly, I wanted to acknowledge the, some of the common threads that went through all of the descriptions in terms of teamwork, in terms of going above and beyond, but also self-growth and learning how to better serve the community and get better at everything that we do. So again, congratulations to everyone who was nominated for Employee of the Quarter. Want to announce that Pablo Montano, who unfortunately could not join us today, is the Employee of the Quarter for the entire county. So congratulations again to everyone. If you'd like to say a few words or first take a picture, but thank you.
Let's go ahead and go through the board, and then we'll all take a picture together. I just want to commend you for the work that you're doing, and it's so obvious, I was sitting here looking at, you know, top-notch contributors to our community and everything that we do at the county. So I'm so proud to be here and to see you all. So thank you for everything that you're doing. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you so much for your dedication and hard work. I've been lucky enough to work with two of you, and I'm sure the rest of you are just as amazing, or even more amazing. But the two of you that I've worked with have been phenomenal and always stepping up and trying to be, exceed expectations. And that's one of the best things you can do in a job, is to be that person that, you know, exceeds the expectations of everybody around you, steps up into teamwork, makes everybody around you better. And it seemed like that was a common thread about all of you. So thank you so much for being those, those people. We're inspired by you, so thank you.
Commissioner Kukari Stone?
Yes, thank you. Well, obviously, you always have to inspire and hold the bar high, and I appreciate all of your dedication. Mostly, please go celebrate with your loved ones because they're a part of our team that keep us going when the days are hard, and also the people that are closest to you at work. So congratulations.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you all so much. Congratulations. I'm always impressed by county staff, and you should feel proud that your supervisors saw you go above and beyond. So I really want to thank you for doing that, and congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I've worked with two of you, Will and Ignacio, and so I know what quality of work you do. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's get a picture together. Thank you. Oh! No, what happened? I just accidentally closed my agenda. What? No, I didn't. Okay. Yes, there are those people who only show up for the fun parts. No, it's all fun parts. In fact, one of my favorite things is approving, approving minutes. Let's do it, guys. Let's approve some minutes here.
I see a fast one.
Well, let's do it. The race is on. Are there, we have, are there any questions, concerns, or changes to the meeting minutes from June 17th, 2025? Hearing none?
I move second.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Johnson, a second from Commissioner Hughes, all in favor for June 17th?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting minutes for June 17th are approved. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns for the meeting minutes of June 24th?
I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Hughes, a second from Commissioner Kukari Stone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our June 2024 minutes are approved. Request approval for the June 24 Board of County Commissioners Regular Meeting. Do we have any comments, questions, or concerns for the June 24th minutes?
Move to approve. Second.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve with Commissioner Johnson, we have a second from Commissioner Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
We have our minutes approved from the June 24th Regular Meeting. Request approval of the June 26 Special Board of County Commission Meeting. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns?
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hughes.
Second.
We have support from Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
The meeting minutes from June 26th are approved. Good job, meeting minute taker. Thank you. Consideration of Commissioner Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and/or Other Items. Commissioner Adam Johnson and Rose Masters, a certificate of appreciation for Eagle Scout Eddie Blick for his contributions to Arroyo Hondo Open Space. Commissioner Johnson, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to recognize Rose Masters, who will give us an update on this amazing project, and I'd like to say a few words afterwards. Thank you.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioners, good afternoon. I think this is also a fun part of the meeting. I'm here to talk about Eddie Blick. He is a member of Santa Fe's Boy Scout Troop 57. Eddie grew up hiking at Arroyo Hondo Open Space, and Eddie wished to give back to the open space where he had spent so much time. For his final Eagle Scout project, the planning of which started in January of this year, Eddie successfully fundraised to purchase four benches and coordinated their installation at Arroyo Hondo Open Space. With prior approval from the county manager and support from the county's Open Space Trails and Park staff in public works and planning, many of whom are here today, Eddie and his fellow scouts installed these four benches in early June. Two are located at the trailheads on Old Aguafrio Road and Arroyo Hondo Road, and two more are placed alongside the trails as resting spots for hikers. Arroyo Hondo Open Space is one of the county's most popular trail systems, yet it has had few trail amenities. Eddie's contributions significantly enhance the experience of trail users and are going to benefit the public for many years to come. On Saturday, August 2nd, this coming Saturday, Eddie will be leading a public hike along Arroyo Hondo's trails with stops to enjoy those new benches. And I understand from Eddie and his father that anyone is welcome to attend. Please arrive at the trailhead at 9:00 a.m. County staff, myself included, would like to commend Eddie for his thoughtfulness and determination in giving back to his community by supporting such a beloved open space. It was a pleasure to work with you, Eddie. Commissioner Johnson, I think you'd like to share a few words as well?
Thank you, Rose. I'd like to ask Eddie and David Blick to come up, and any other members of your family that are with you today. Thank you so much, Eddie, from the bottom of my heart. I live quite near this open space, and I heard about your project. I want to thank the county manager's office for supporting your efforts, and this is an important endeavor. I know that it marks the culmination of many years of being a Boy Scout and rising to the level of Eagle Scout. There are four beautiful benches, different places around this trail system. I walked it yesterday with my dog in the rain. Actually, no one was out there because of that. But I'm really impressed with your work. As you may know, my father, Bill Johnson, was the trail steward of that open space for a very long time. He now, he had one bench up there, looking out over the old Pueblo site and onto the Sandias and beyond. And now there are four other places for people to take a break, enjoy the scenery, and that's due to your perseverance. And David, I know that you have supported your son in this endeavor, and I really appreciate that work. I want to recognize Rose, of course, for her efforts. You know, you're the soul ranger in the county, so we want you, we want to support you in many ways, and I appreciate your work in this. I want to thank Adeline Murthy, Monica Harmon, Ernest Archuleta, Shane Martinez, and the county manager's office for this. And with that, I'd like to present you with the certificate.
Ernesto Archuleta and his team for their help with my project. You guys are fantastic, and we're a pleasure to work with.
The Boy Scouts, and Sarah Slane over there, receiving running back and forth.
What?
I highlighted that part on the bottom. Oh, let me find it. Do we have any further, well, do we have any comments from the commission? Because I know I have something to say. Commissioner Green?
Congratulations. It's great to see young leadership and mentorship across, across the generations, and to take stewardship of something that is going to be near and dear to you. You're going to travel great places around the world, but you will have made a mark on our county and be able to come home and have a seat. And we will all sit there, and we should, we should remember this day. I will, when I go out there, and thank you. Congratulations. This is really great.
Commissioner Hughes?
Well, as a fellow Eagle Scout also.
Oh, wow.
No, I very much appreciate, I love the trail. I walk it several times a year, probably, and now I will have a place to sit and rest at the top because I'm just getting older, so I may need to rest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Kukari Stone?
Congratulations, Eddie. Thank you for your leadership, and now I want to go see the trail. Thank you.
Thank you. And I too want to thank you because I'm one of those who, yeah, and if I stop and I'm just going to, it's tiresome, and now I know I can sit, and I'm going to enjoy sitting, though I'm going to push it, but we're going to be very grateful for the opportunity to sit. And I have to actually agree with Rose. When I saw you sitting out there and then hearing about what you've done and that you committed your time to doing this, I couldn't stop smiling. I thought, well, my face didn't hurt smiling with the last one, so this is really fun. So thank you so much for your good work and your contribution. So let's all take a picture. Next, on our agenda, and this is an incredibly important proclamation that really brings to light that every person has value, every person has a contribution to make, and that every spirit that comes onto our planet and lives with us has something to give, and joy to give, and life to give. During this month, the month of July, is a request for approval of a proclamation proclaiming the month of July as Disability Pride Month. I would like to hand the floor to Commissioner Kakari Stone.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. First, I want to thank you for inviting me to co-sponsor this with you, and I appreciate your leadership on this. Just as we do a check in the room, Daniel, I want to be sure Ms. Katie Ellis is able to be seen, and we can do a sound check. She's joined us remotely. There's Katie. Hi, Katie. Maybe we could do a voice sound check because she'll be reading the proclamation. Okay, great. Is Angelique Montoya Chavez with us? Thank you. Thank you. Come on up, Angelique, please. Thank you. We'll do a soundtrack on your mic. Great, thank you. As part of this proclamation, we are celebrating the 35th anniversary of the American Disability Rights Act, and we also have our invitee, Alice Jose Fresquez, Esquire. Thank you so much. And who else is with us?
This is another one of our commissioner, of our board members, is Yvonne Insignes.
Could you repeat your name, please?
Yvonne Insignes.
Okay, Yvonne Insignes. Thank you so much. So we have also online with us Ms. Katie Ellis, and I want to just mention, as we celebrate the 35th anniversary of the Americans Disability Act, this is a landmark civil rights momentum, movement. It's not just an act, it's a movement of people, people like yourselves, each of the three of you, as well as Katie, who's online with us. And part of that movement is being able to bring forth policy, inclusion, and belonging, and understanding the challenges that people live every day. And I just want to mention that when we think of disabilities, many of us in the public have misperceptions, disinformation, and misinformation, and we count on those with lived experience, but we also count on our own empathy as leaders and sensibilities, that disabilities and different abilities is across the life spectrum, from birth to when we aged, to when we transition. It also presents its form in physical, mental, emotional, intellectual, developmental disabilities, developmental, but also as we age, our activities of daily living change, and at any given time, due to a brain injury, or a car accident, or stroke, any one of us could be living with a different or disability. And I wanted to just recognize today that each of us think very deeply around the physical challenges that a space can offer, the challenges that participating fully in society might offer. And today is not just a proclamation by Chair Bustamante and I, but it's a call to action, to join the art advocates. The burden is not on each of these folks reading today who are huge advocates, but the burden is on all of us. We all have, if you have a business, hire someone with a disability. Slow things down, allow people to speak for themselves. And I'll just mention something. I've just met each of you on Disability Pride Month, and I just want to invite all of you to say something very briefly, including Katie online, on why this proclamation is important to you. And we'll start with Katie to have her join us. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner Stone and Commissioner Bustamante. It is an honor and a privilege to be with you all today. I'm sorry I could not be there in person due to the elevator malfunctioning. I don't think it would be quite wise for the county commission to have someone with a disability stuck in the elevator on such an important day as this. So I'm glad we could be able to join via Zoom today. And again, I just echo what Commissioner Kakari Stone said. You know, disability can happen to anyone at any time, and our community, the disability community, is one that is very accepting and very welcoming. So I appreciate you all, and I look forward to supporting this county of Santa Fe.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
Yes. First, I want to thank all of the commissioners for having us here today. My name is Angelique Montoya Chavez, and I'm a proud parent of two children with disabilities. I've poured my heart into this city, into the county, and into the state, just advocating not only for my own children, but for children everywhere. And so I thank you for having us here today.
Hello, Commissioners. My name's Yvonne Insignes. Thank you for having us. I really appreciate you doing this for our county. I take pride in being a part of this. Like, I am going to reiterate again, but it's not they and them, it's all of us. At some point, we're all going to be impacted by a disability of some form, whether it's ourselves or someone we love. So it's important that we take these steps and we all come together to try and make it a more accessible county. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Bustamante, and Commissioners. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'll just, these are elegant words said today. I'll just add that often accessibility improvements that are designed for people in the disability community actually have the way of manifesting to help everyone. If you think of curb cuts, for example, that's something that's created for wheelchair users, but they're universally used now for individuals pushing strollers, or even, you know, a delivery service. So small things that we do for our disability community can also largely impact everyone in the community as well.
Thank you, Manager, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kakari Stone, and I want to thank you all for enlightening and bringing this to the commission to recognize in the opportunity. I'm going to go ahead and just get this personal because that woman right there is actually a cousin of mine, and I am absolutely grateful because what I can say is since day one, when she had her first child, and I'm sorry, I'm getting a little verklempt, but you jumped in, and you didn't just jump in to your home and our family, but you jumped into the community and brought recognition of service. And one thing that we know is whatever we call a disability, the other abilities that a person brings, no matter what their knowledge attainment level is, their hearts, their personalities, other things matter, and you have been an absolute gift, not just to our family, but to the community in making sure that people understand the love, I'm sorry, the love that people bring into our homes, that what we call a disability is also an ability to love and extend ourselves. So with deep gratitude, and I have to apologize for not being able to be at the Plaza that day. I have this head condition, I won't get into the details, but it causes great pain, but it was about missing you, and I am so grateful for your good work, sincerely. So if you will, Commissioner Kakari Stone, thank you.
I just also want to thank you for launching and implementing Disability Pride. I think we're the first in New Mexico, and it sounds like you've inspired Albuquerque to do the same, so thank you for your leadership. And I just want to be sure we get your names for the record as our honored guests and advocates. Not here today is Amira Rashid. She's been a longtime advocate, and she did not feel well today, and works with the New Mexico Department of Justice. And before you read the proclamation, we hope that the four of you would do a round robin reading it so you could just kind of decide who goes next, because I think it's nice to share the voice and space. But I also want to invite you to think deeply with us and the county manager and the team here how we do more inclusion and disability advocacy training with all our staff and all our elected officials. I think it's important, and Katie had done a training for women in elected positions, and my mind was blown away. I thought my partner who worked in disability rights her whole career, I learned a lot from her, but Katie, I just want to say you really, it was a real call to action and a deep awakening of what it takes to truly be inclusive. So it's a journey. Thank you. So now it's time to read the proclamation, and maybe we'll start with you, Katie, and then read a few lines, and then we'll pass it on to Alice, Mr. Fresquez, and then we'll keep going down and end with you. Thank you.
Santa Fe County Proclamation, proclaiming the recognition of July 25th as Disability Pride Month, introduced by Commissioner Reblazman and Commissioner Kakari Stone. Whereas July 26th, 2025, marks the 35th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, a landmark civil rights law that prohibits discrimination based on disability and affirms the rights of individuals with disabilities to fully, to full participation in society,
Whereas Disability Pride Month honors the milestones of uplifting the voices, achievements, and lived experiences of disabled individuals while celebrating the power, resilience, and diversity of the disability community, and...
Whereas Disability Pride reinforces the right of every individual to define their own identity and challenges, damaging stereotypes, replacing stigma with pride and empowerment, and confronting the root causes of ableism and bias, and...
Whereas ensuring access and inclusion in all aspects of life, from transportation to housing and healthcare, to digital infrastructure, are an essential part of achieving social justice and must account for people of all abilities, and...
Whereas individuals with disabilities continue to face systemic barriers and unequal access, including compounding discrimination based on race, gender, identity, sexual orientation, immigration status, age, or religion, and...
Whereas Santa Fe County affirms that disability is a natural part of the human experience and commits to embedding disability equity into its policies, operations, decision-making process to build an inclusive and accessible community, and...
Whereas the county demonstrates this commitment through robust programs provided by the Senior Services Division, including home-delivered meals for homebound seniors, assistant navigation during medical equipment, and wheelchair-accessible transportation,
Whereas the county-supported Connect Network amplifies services through vital partnerships with community-based organizations such as Coming Home Connection, offering Medicaid waiver navigation, healthcare system support, and a durable medical equipment loan program. Las Cumbres Community Services, providing early intervention for children, support for adults with developmental disabilities, and respite care. Santa Fe Veterans Alliance, excuse me, delivering services for veterans and their families, including housing assistance, scholarships, and mental health access. New Vistas, offering advocacy, peer support, independent living skills, and disability resources across the lifespan, and...
Whereas collaboration strengthens community impact and ensures inclusive, holistic support for individuals with disabilities across Santa Fe County, and...
Whereas Santa Fe County has been awarded for the Community Heritage Accessibility Award and will receive the award during Santa Fe's 2025 Accessibility Awards hosted by Disability Pride New Mexico, a 501(c) organization, on the 35th of July, 2025, in recognition of the outstanding efforts and commitment to enhancing accessibility for people with disabilities in our community, and...
Whereas the 2025 Santa Fe Accessibility Awards commemorate the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and celebrate Disability Pride Month.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Fe County, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Disability Pride Month.
Approved, adopted, and passed on this 29th day of July, 2025. We can take a photo, and we'll have our member on the screen up top. Does that work?
Do I have to vote on it first?
Oh, yes, please. I'm sorry, we all have to agree.
You declared it.
I make a motion to vote this proclamation.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. Commissioner Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We actually have a proclamation that's ready to roll. Thank you all.
Madam Chair, may I say a comment?
Well, let's go through, and we have some people who want to say some things. So, Commissioner Green?
So, as an architect, one of the first things that we learn about in architecture school is the ADA, because it is through architecture that we're not necessarily designing for ourselves, but we're designing for other people, and public architecture is one of those places that the ADA is just indoctrinated into us, and it teaches us about the diversity of needs. And so whether it's acoustics in a building, right, or it is accessibility of ramps, it is bathrooms, and it is, I mean, it's like, the list goes on, and there's probably, I'd say, an entire semester or two that we are continuously updated with these things. And so I liked that Eli brought up the ramps. In New York City, they talk about how the ramps created a community of mothers. They used to wave across the street from each other because they couldn't actually go across the street with their strollers, but that the strollers suddenly freed moms and to create communities in New York City. So these things have, the ADA has lifted us all up and make us all more accessible for a variety of things. And so thank you for championing this. Thank you for bringing this forward, Commissioners. I look forward to marching with you again next year at the Disability Pride Parade and helping any way I can. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Yeah, this is very important, and we recognize Disability Pride Month. I have a great sympathy for people with disabilities. I have a disability myself that is very strange because it's related to allergies, but I actually can't go to a meeting this week because nobody thought to accommodate that. So I think we still have a long way to go to accommodating all the types of disabilities people have, and I certainly really appreciate you two bringing this forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kakari Stone and Chair Bustamante. This is very important, and we've already passed it, but I heartily support it. Equity is extremely essential to a fair and just county, and it also helps us promote sort of fundamental things that we need in our lives, which are love and human thriving. So I'm grateful to the commission for bringing this forward and to you for your advocacy.
Thank you. Let's take a photo.
And I think we can get copies to all of you, originals, I think, but I'll double check. Sarah says yes. Okay.
fun stopped anywhere. So thank you very, very much. Onward to our consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided?
I move to approve the consent agenda as is.
Commissioner Hughes has motioned to approve the consent agenda as is. Do we have support?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner We have a second from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda has been approved. We have no appointments or reappointments. Miscellaneous action items. A resolution number 2025 requesting a budget adjustment to local government budget management system for the General Fund 101 and State Legislative Appropriations Fund 303 to correct a discrepancy. Thank you, Yvonne.
Madam Chair, one of the items on the consent agenda was a resolution, so I'd like to provide that resolution number for the record. So 4B is resolution number 2025-082.
Apologies on that one. Okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the first item before you relates to a budget adjustment that is necessary to correct a discrepancy between the Department of Finance Administration's local government divisions budget management system, also known as LGBMS. As a requirement, the county has to submit not only its interim budget, but also its final budget, along with all budget adjustments during the year, to LGBMS. When we submit that information to LGBMS, we have to crosswalk our chart accounts to their chart accounts, and periodically we do make mistakes. And in this case, as when we submitted resolution 2024-136, we crosswalked one of the lines to an incorrect fund, causing both systems to be out of balance, and this budget adjustment will correct that. To clarify, this budget adjustment will not be entered into our accounting system, but it will be entered into LGBMS, thereby correcting that system, making it match our budget for fiscal year 25. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Herrera?
I move that we approve item 6A unless there's a comment.
We have a motion to approve the resolution number 2025, a resolution requesting the budget adjustment. Item 6A, do we have a second?
I'll second if there's no other comments.
We have a second from Commissioner Green. Our motion was from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries. May we have a resolution number, please?
Madam Chair, that resolution number is 2025-083.
083, thank you very much. Item B, a resolution to approve the county's fiscal year 2025 fourth quarter financial report for submittal to the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. Ms. Herrera?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, with this item, as a requirement of the submission of the fiscal year 26 budget, we have to present the fourth quarter report to the board for review and approval. The other three quarters are submitted to DFA, presenting the county's actual results quarter to date. This, the fourth quarter report, provides a summary of the actual, so actual revenues and expenditures as of period 12, June 30, 2025. It is on a cash basis and unaudited, as we are still continuing to do our accrual process as well as closeout and reconciliation. In addition to the actual results, the recap report summarizes or provides resources, cash balances that were available at the beginning of the fiscal year to support the fiscal year 25 budget, along with estimated revenues. So basically, it creates the ending cash balance as of June 30, 2025, which we will then carry over as beginning cash balances for fiscal year 26 within the LGBMS system, which will help support the fiscal year 26 budget, along with estimated revenues for that fiscal year, as well as calculating what the required reserves are per statute for the General Fund and the County Road Fund 20400. In addition to the recap report, we're also required to submit a list of county investments and any adjustments made to that beginning cash balance, which generally relate to, since we are preparing the report on a cash basis as of period 12, they allow us to true it up after the audit is completed to make any additional adjustments to ensure that the cash balance is actually accurate. And we provide a summary of that schedule, and then we provide DFA with our budget tax report that we use to do, to actually prepare that report. And with that, Madam Chair, I stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Herrera? Commissioner Green?
Not so much a question, it's just a thank you for keeping things on time and looking real tight, so appreciate that. And if there's nothing else, I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there anything else from the Commission?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Green. We have a second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a resolution number, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, item 6B, resolution number is 2025-084.
Thank you. Item C, a resolution adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2025-26. Ms. Herrera?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I hope this to be the final item presented to the Board as far as fiscal year 26 budget. First, I want to thank everybody, the Board, County Manager's Office, and the departments. As County Manager continues to always mention, it's always a team effort, and without everybody's help and support, there's no way that we could have actually prepared any of our fiscal year budgets. With that, Madam Chair, the budget presented before you is the proposed fiscal year 26 final budget, which includes the interim budget of $396 million that was approved by the Board back in May and approved by DFA in June. In addition to the interim budget, we are adding capital and maintenance projects in an amount of $243,377,658 for those. In addition to that, we made some additional adjustments to the budget. Most of the adjustments were related to year-end bars that occurred during the month of June that we knew we wouldn't be able to spend, so we need to make sure to get those funds carried over. Made some minor adjustments for some grants for DWI, as well as the Law Enforcement Protection Fund. In addition, due to continued volatility in prices, we carried over the unspent portion of contingency funds that we'd budgeted in '25 for purchases of fixed assets to help address any potential price increases that the departments may experience. Additional cleanup regarding fixed assets that were not recommended, that were inadvertently left in the budget during the interim, as part of the interim budget. On June, on July 1st, the county closed the sale of the General Obligation Bond Series 2025, so we wanted to make sure that we included that funding for that bond sale, and then made some additional changes related to the purchase of a facility for the Youth Behavioral Health Center, for the purchase of that, as well as closing costs. Originally, we had budgeted $7 million from the Indigent Hospital Fund, as well as the EMS, EMS Hospital Fund, I believe. We are proposing to swap the funding from the Indigent Hospital Fund 220 in the amount of $2.3.2 million with General Fund money, as well as additional funding for the closing cost of $50,000. As a result of freeing up the funding from the Indigent Fund, we are proposing to transfer that amount, the $3.2 million, to the Corrections Medical Division in support of healthcare services for indigent inmates within our detention facility. As a result, we'd also reduce the support from the General Fund to that same division, the Corrections Medical Division, by that same amount, freeing up the funding from the General Fund to be able to support the purchase of the property for the Youth Behavioral Health Center. And with that, Madam Chair, I stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Herrera? Commissioner Kakari Stone?
Yeah, Chair Bustamante, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Herrera. I want to be sure I understand the process, because the next resolution, we're voting to grant the County Managers the authority to negotiate the space for the Youth Behavioral Health Center. Is this the time, Chair, that we discuss the Youth Behavioral Health Center?
No, that would be on the next item.
But in terms of process, we're already be voting yes, but the next item we'll be discussing, and I just want to be sure we have robust discussion before voting yes. I want to understand.
Commissioner Kakari Stone, you bring up a very good point. Commissioner, Manager Schaefer, do you understand the question that's being presented?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Kakari Stone, yes, I do. I think approving the budget would simply be that. It would approve the budget for, you know, the concept of a youth behavioral health center, but absent some authorization to move forward, you know, with the purchase or otherwise to implement that concept, the money wouldn't be spent. So in other words, you could vote yes on the budget, but still vote no on the resolution relative to the particular, you know, purchase of the facility that's been identified. I hope I understood and answered the question, but they're two separate items. This just establishes the budget for the county for fiscal year 26, including carrying over funds for the Youth Behavioral Health Center.
Commissioner Kakari Stone?
Thank you. I guess the rationale in my mind is that we're voting yes on the budget, we're voting yes on the Youth Behavioral Health Center, and therefore this would be the time to discuss it. Not that I'm against it, but I just wanted to make sure we're discussing it at a time where we're voting yes on the budget for it. So it still doesn't seem like it's the rational line chain of voting in my mind.
It's entirely at the discretion of the Board. Again, I think that it's not improper to do it in this order, but if the Board would prefer to discuss the Youth Behavioral Health Center at this time, that would be the prerogative of the Board.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I'd like to just point out that we already voted for this money in a previous session, and so we're just, this is just switching money around so it gets used for more logical stuff. We're not, we already voted for the $7 million, so it's already there. We're just switching where it's come from.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. So essentially, as the manager said, the money has been approved, but if we don't approve it for this purpose, it would have been approved for.
I appreciate it. It's just that Commissioner Green and I took the time Friday to visit it, so I'll keep my comments for when we vote on the next item. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other further comments? All right. Do we have a motion to approve resolution adopting the final budget for the fiscal 25-26?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2025-2026.
We have a motion from Commissioner Green. We have support from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a resolution number, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, item 6C is 2025-085.
Thank you. 085.
Madam Chair, just as a ques, is it fiscal year 2026 to 2027, or is it fiscal year 2025 to 2026?
I believe it's 2025-26.
Okay, just making sure. Fiscal year 2026 is the closed, the parentheses caption, just want to make sure we're...
Madam Chair, Commissioner Green's correct. It's 2025 to 2026.
Fiscal year 26. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item D, a resolution granting the County Manager authority to negotiate the purchase and acquisition of office space in Santa Fe to support functions of the Community Services Department Regional Youth Behavioral Health Center.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Chanel Delgado from the Youth and Family Services Division, along with Michelle Kaski from Public Works, and it is a privilege to be able to come before you all and provide you an update on the work that's been done the last 13 months. I'm just going to ask if our PowerPoint presentation will be... Thank you. All right, so if we can go to the next slide, please. In July 2024, I stood before you all, thank you so much, and I requested the approval of the concept of a multi-agency youth behavioral health center. The decision was grounded in an established need for improved, integrated youth behavioral health services across the region. The approval reflected years of growing concern and input from youth and families and providers and community leaders. From August 2024 to June 2025, a needs assessment and business planning has ensued. To ensure we are making decisions based on facts, not assumptions, the county contracted via Positiva to conduct a needs and gaps analysis. This work allowed us to clearly define service gaps, client demographics, and delivery challenges. The planning process was data-driven, aligning service design with what our local data told us was most urgently needed in our community. This stage laid the foundation for evidence-based decision-making moving forward. From winter to spring 2025, a drafted MOU and spatial planning began. We begun to formalize initial partnerships with key organizations through a drafted MOU. At the same time, we initiated spatial planning to ensure that the facility that was selected, that the design supported real-world service delivery. Partner input was critical in this. We used it to test feasibility of the different design options and ensure vision matched operational realities. Again, data-informed and feedback played a major role in this. Then we did a site search. Six locations were explored and vetted. A data-driven selection process was conducted where six potential locations were evaluated. Each site was assessed for accessibility, renovation potential, long-term viability. We used a scoring matrix and applied objective criteria to guide our recommendations. This approach ensured transparency and alignment with both partner and community needs. The sites included 730 Alto Street, 1620 Hospital Drive, 2905 Rodeo Park East, 1 Plaza Prentza, 121 Sandoval Street, and the site for consideration today, 2933 Rodeo Park Drive East. Next, a youth behavioral health subcommittee was formed. The Santa Fe County Behavioral Health Leadership Council has approved and supported our endeavors, and to guide the project and maintain alignment with best practices, we formed a youth behavioral health subcommittee. This group will bring together cross-sector leaders and youth-serving experts to advise on strategy and help ensure the work remains evidence-based and community-based. Next, we completed youth focus groups. Listening to young people was an essential component. We conducted a series of focus groups with local youth, from the Santa Fe County Internship Program to the Uplift Youth Program, to directly hear their concerns, priorities, and lived experiences. These conversations confirmed the established need for integrated behavioral health services and helped us tailor the center's functions and services to meet youth where they were at. In addition to learning from youth, our work through the county-operated Youth Behavioral Health Case Management Program revealed a recurring theme amongst our families. Families frequently don't know how or where to go or to begin to seek behavioral health support or services in our community. Parents often report confusion about available resources, unclear pathways, and a lack of starting points when accessing behavioral health services, again conforming this established need for integrated care. Today, we bring before you a site that we have carefully planned and gathered input on. We are proud to present the recommended site for the Multi-Agency Youth Behavioral Health Center. This location emerged as the strongest option through a data-driven, evidence-based selection process. It reflects our shared vision for a space that is accessible, functional, and fully aligned with the needs identified by our community. So introducing 2935 Rodeo Park Drive East. Why this site works for a youth behavioral health center? It's a strategic location and youth access. Nestled along the I-25 corridor, Rodeo Drive Park East ensures seamless access for youth from mid and south sides of town, exactly where GIS data has showed the majority reside. Service proximity and built-in referrals. So adjacent to key health and educational institutions like Christus Outpatient Services, I Associates Hub, and close to Christus and Presbyterian Hospitals, various public schools, IAA, and charter schools, this location naturally supports warm handoffs and agency collaboration. Regionally, it provides a strong service access, not only within Santa Fe County, but also Ria Riba County, San Miguel County... Ria Riba County, San Miguel County, Los Alamos County, to amplify referral networks and partnership opportunities regionally. Highly prepared and scalable, the existing office layout features abundant natural light lending to the therapeutic atmosphere, making it ready for use with modifications. The modular design also supports expansion and customization to adapt to service needs. Quiet and supportive neighborhood, tucked away yet nestled among reputable businesses, the site is well-suited for therapeutic work and providing youth with a calm retreat. The site is also zoned for these purposes. Flexibility and multi-agency growth. The spacious floor plan and modular design offers the ability to bring in additional partners and organizations in the future, allowing for incremental expansion and service offerings until program is at full scale. And for more on the specifications, I'm going to pass it to Michelle Kaski.
Thank you, Chanel. Thank you, Chair Bustamante Commissioners. Real Property has been looking for a building to accommodate this use for over a year, even before I got here, and as much as we've been out to two or six buildings, we have considered very many more. And with each tour and with each consideration, the needs assessment has gotten more and more dialed in and more and more clear, and it's became obvious that we were either having available buildings that were too small, or that we didn't really understand the breadth of the services that we'd like to offer in this building. So ultimately, finding no listed properties, Real Property did again go out with an RFI to commercial brokers, seeking unlisted properties, and that is how we found this building that has been housing the National Center for Genome Research since 1999. And I've got to tell you, we've been out there eight times now, and it's a beautiful building, and I fall in love with it personally more and more every time I see it, because it's one of those rare buildings that has been so carefully cared for over the years and has been designed, it almost feels like it was designed for us, actually, because of the way it was built to accommodate different branches of this business, different wings. So one of the key needs from our service providers, or who we hope will be our service providers, is that they both, they all wanted to be under one roof, but have a sense of privacy. They wanted one common entrance that set the tone, but also an ability to have privacy, discretion, interior places for lobbies that weren't out in the main lobby, ways for people to feel safe in entering, and yet when they were back in the space, for the spaces to open up and be full of light. And that's one of the things we're most excited about for this building. The National Center for Genome Research has already been renting some wings of the building for different uses and for high-security and sensitive areas, so we know it's wired for this. They are part of an international group of researchers, so it's very high-tech building and something we'll be able to put to use right away. Inside, it's ready to go, as far as offices go. It doesn't need any work inside. It was built in 1999. Some of the, some of the aspects of it need to be upgraded, they're, they're just ending their useful life, so we do anticipate some maintenance of stucco, HVAC, and roof over the next five years, but nothing's failing at this point, and those are things that we can budget for down the line. The most exciting thing about it is how much light and views there are as you walk through the building, and as we've toured it with different partners, commissioners who are able to come see it, thank you for coming and seeing it and sharing our vision for it. The partners that we showed it to were very excited how they could put it immediately to use, and also this sense of light and space. In your packet materials, we've uploaded the appraisal that was done recently, so it has appraised for $7 million, and we've also uploaded a draft of the building inspection we've, we've done. This is how we're getting some of our price estimates for replacing stucco, roof, repair, this type of thing. It is a draft, and the seller who's occupied the building is making some, has suggested some changes to it, because they have a little bit more information about the building and some of the things that they've done to the building over the years. So ultimately, after we've accepted their additions to the report, we'd like to upload a completed report after it's at, of its draft stage. Let's see. In addition to everything we've mentioned, and because this is a new endeavor, we wanted to make sure that we were choosing a site and a building that would have a resale value and a strong market value in case this doesn't come together the way we thought it would or anything like this, and, and this is in a wonderful part of town, a beautiful building, we'll take good care of it, and it would have market value down the road. And again, it is zoned for this use, and you'll have, now that we're showing it to you, it's a building you obviously recognize from the freeway, and as you come up to it, though, it's got a nice sense of privacy and where we're not really right on a main road or that there's any stigma in entering, but also will give us the chance to identify that we have a regional youth behavioral health center here in Santa Fe County, and this is exactly where it is. And I stand for any questions about the building. Oh, and Chanel's got more.
Thank you. Before we do questions, I just want to wrap the final slide here. So once the facility is officially acquired, the Community Services Department Youth and Family Services Division will move forward with releasing an RFP. This RFP will invite qualified providers to apply for an opportunity to reside within the facility, and our goal is to build a diverse network of providers that can deliver critical behavioral health services to all youth and families, regardless of insurance or Medicaid eligibility. Services must be low to no barrier, ensuring easy access, especially for those most in need. But before we talk about solutions, it's important to understand the magnitude and urgency that we're responding to. Let's start with the youth behavioral health crisis across the United States and how it's reflected right here in Santa Fe County. So our request for youth crisis continuum is based on between 2011 and 2021, youth visits to emergency departments for mental health reasons doubled nationally. Even more alarming, suicide-related visits increased fivefold during that same period. This indicates a breakdown in early intervention. Our systems aren't catching young people until they're in an acute crisis. That's a clear signal we need upstream coordinated care options. Two, access to individual and family counseling services. Locally, 52% of Santa Fe County residents report needing behavioral health services but can't access them for two reasons. One, long waits, long wait lists, and two, inability to find a provider accepting new clients. One in five adolescents nationally report unmet mental health care needs. These missed opportunities for early intervention and prevention and recovery are signaled through this data. Suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention. Here in New Mexico, suicide was the leading cause of death for young people aged 11 through 17 from 2017 to 2021. 128 youth deaths over a five-year period. Suicide accounted for one in every three youth deaths in that age range, according to New Mexico Department of Health. This is more than a statistic, it's a public health emergency. Our community needs coordinated suicide prevention and intervention and postvention services, now more than it ever has. Grief support services. Grief is a significant and yet often overlooked behavioral health need and indicator. In New Mexico, one in seven children will experience the death of a parent or sibling by the age of 18. By the age of 25, 142,000 youth in New Mexico will be bereaved. New Mexico ranks third in the nation for childhood bereavement, and this speaks to the need for ongoing developmentally, developmentally appropriate grief support services. Youth case management and psychiatric services. New Mexico ranks 45th out of 50 states in youth mental health, specifically where youth have higher prevalence of mental health and lower access to care. Over 3,000 youth in New Mexico with private insurance were unable to access mental health or emotional care because their insurance didn't cover it. This highlights systemic gaps and the need for youth-specific navigation, psychiatric, and case management services. So in summary, when we look at this data collectively, rising crisis, access barriers, high suicide rates, childhood grief, service shortages, the need for an integrated, multi-agency behavioral health response is not just established, it's urgent. This is the case we've used to guide every decision in the planning of this center, from the services we prioritize to the partners we will engage. As we confront the adult mental health crisis in our community alongside the alarming rise in youth mental health indicators, I can't help but to wonder, if we don't take action now, what will our adult community look like in the next 10 years? I'm deeply grateful and proud to stand before you all today for this vital request for the well-being and the future of our community. This is an exciting step towards making a comprehensive, collaborative youth behavioral health center a reality in our region. Thank you.
Thank you, Chanel and Michelle. We have questions for our, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chanel, for your presentation. Thank you, Michelle. I may have other questions. I wasn't able to visit the site because of a little bit of short notice, but I would love to see it in the future, provided that we say yes to this. I was interested in the location of the bus stop, which I read about in the packet materials, but I wasn't exactly sure where that is. So where is the, where is the bus stop relative to the building?
I believe it's located directly on Rodeo Drive, and it's about a block.
It does go up Rodeo Boulevard, because there are other medical facilities up that actual road, so it's within less than a block.
So it actually turns into the court. I've been in that compound before, which gives a little bit of privacy to.
Right.
People using buses. Okay. And remind me how many different service providers are imagined at this site, or is that variable?
Chair and Commissioner Johnson, that will be determined based on the response to the RFP, but just as mentioned in the previous slide, there are core components that we do need to house there, including the crisis continuum, the grief support services, suicide prevention intervention, postvention services, individual and family counseling, and based on our gap analysis, we have other adjunct services that could be incorporated into the facility as well, so that's really to be determined post-RFP.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I'm struck at, so these are really helpful, and they, for those who haven't seen it, it seems like, if I'm reading this right, the different colors indicate different kind of office compounds that have their own lobbies or their own enclosed spaces. Is that right?
Commissioner Johnson, Chair Bustamante, originally, when we started looking at this building, we were considering four providers as a sample, and then as we got in there with actual potential partners, we realized there's also this middle area where they could expand or contract into. So we've got the definite wings on either end, and then there's a middle section, whereas if providers needed more space or little space, there's a bit of flexibility there. And then what's also been described to us is some center space, some shared space for when larger spaces for conference rooms, training, family gatherings, events, that that middle area could accommodate that. And some of these things we don't know specifically yet, because we don't know exactly who our partners are going to be. We've done a breakdown of how many small offices, how many medium offices, how many large offices, how much of these larger spaces could be shared, but so that will get much more specific as we identify specific partners.
So that's helpful, thank you. Is there, you, you assessed a number of different buildings. Did they, were they similar in size? This seems very, very large to me, and that may be needed, but I am just curious, the price tag obviously increases when the size increases, so what was the rationale in your search?
Commissioner Johnson, Chair Bustamante, this is the largest building we've toured. Actually, we toured one larger building, and it was just, the space was too big and too open and too overwhelming. Most of the spaces that we toured were much too small. Once we really, we were maybe fitting these agencies in that are in small space right now, but once we really asked them, how many private offices, how many meeting rooms, how many, this was how many offices we needed, plus or minus about 20, I guess. The need for the space, or what makes this space ideal, is not just its square footage, but some of the other asks from these potential partners for light and a sense of connection to nature while you're inside, an ability to be outside the building and yet in some sense of privacy, a sense of not being on a busy road where you might be observed, you know, coming and going. So it probably is slightly smaller than we really need right now, although, once we go out to RFP and we see who our partners are, we've got space to accommodate groups, which is exciting, too. But a lot of what makes it ideal is not necessarily its size. There was a big leap in terms of square footages, just in what's available in town, and we probably jumped up about 10,000 square feet above what we were looking at, but a lot of those spaces were also way too small, once we really tried to accommodate what the actual needs were.
Okay, yeah, thank you. To my mind, you know, we want to do this right and not squeeze people into a space, so that's helpful. Thank you very much.
And Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, I just want to clarify that when potential partners is mentioned, we did, I want to clarify that we did bring in service providers that are currently doing this work to ensure the feasibility of each site, so they have the ability to apply to the RFP, but there's been no identified potential partners, just their expertise to guide the direction and ensuring that we are choosing an appropriate site.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Chair, I'll defer to the commissioners that didn't get to tour, and then I'll wait to make my comments at the end. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I have no questions.
Chanel and Michelle, thank you for your work, and I think today we're not voting on the value and the added value of services and community needs of our youth and our families in Santa Fe County and their surrounding regions, so I don't want to mix the two. I think we've all established this is a real crisis in behavioral health, and in seeing this space and facility, I just want to support that it's very beautiful, actually, and there's a lot of light, as you said, and there's space to grow, so, and to respond to needs. Am I cut off? Okay. I did want to, as we're thinking about passing this to grant our county manager the authority to negotiate the purchase, I want to highlight some things that came up in the conversation. I do see that this, it was appraised at $7 million, and the asking price was 7.2, correct? I did read the report on the condition and repairs coming at 606K, 606,000. I do want to ask, is this report the final report that really looks at the true cost of getting this space ready for youth services and our community? The 606, is that the true cost, or would there be another, in our process and due diligence with the county manager, would there be another process where we look at the true cost of things we discussed? Because what I observed, just to share with the other commissioners, was while it's a beautiful space, it's been created for labs, right? So there's still labs and equipment, there's still a huge room with a huge computer technologies in it that need to be removed. in it that need to be removed. A lot of the carpet, that's not a lot of cost, was in disrepair. I looked at the parking lot cost, but I'm wondering if Public Works can look at it, because that parking lot is cracked. I don't think it's just asphalt on top. I think we should look at the structure of what that might cost as well. The roofing, I see that it was just a preliminary in the report, site visit, so more needs to be done in detail on the true cost of that roofing. And I want to just say, as you thought about trauma, and we talked about trauma-informed space, there would be a need to break down some walls, there would be a need to do some open space, there's opportunities for more of an industrial kitchen so families can share meals. We also talked about the possibility, which is great, of the emergency crisis triage from the back and making it a La Salita, that would be like La Sala, and I think we really need that in our community, space for grandparents, accessibility space, intergenerational space, and the need for youth to co-design this, for them not to just come in that we're creating something for them. But that being said, I think there's an additional cost that we kicked around that someone quoted was $2 million additional, not 606 to get this ready. So we're looking at almost a $9 million to $10 million true cost. I wanted to share that with the other commissioners and really encourage our county manager to say, let's get Public Works, let's get our experts out there to really look at what it's going to cost to fix this up. Even new spaces might be new until you're living in it, right? So those are my comments, and thank you for your work, and I do appreciate and support this space, but I think we need to be fiscally responsible and not pay the high price on it, and really think what it's going to cost our county to fix it up.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Kakari Stone. In the memo, we had estimated $2 to $3 million, really ultimately, of the work that needs to be done out there. The building evaluation really identified things that are wrong with the building, just like if you were buying a house and you would have an inspection done, just so that we know what we're going into. It has been reviewed by Public Works and Facilities, the report, to be relatively accurate, and we have not, we're not under contract to buy it, so we haven't gotten actual bids for actual anything. The thing to keep in mind with the work that needs to be done to the building is that all of that is identified as a short-term need, it's not immediate, that part is not immediately needed in order for us to occupy the building, but something we would want to budget for over the next two to five years, and seek funding for as necessary. It's not failing right now, so, but as good stewards of the building, it's obviously things that would need to be taken care of in the next short term. In addition to that, though, we do recognize that we are buying an office building that's been inhabited by scientists, and we definitely will want to contract with architects that are sensitive to vulnerable populations, as well as can put the desires of the partners that we end up choosing to do this project with us, exactly what they need, and what types of security do they need, what do they need to keep their clients feeling safe. And so, as much as you can, when you're going to purchase anything, we're looking at it in broad strokes right now, and with partners who could say, couldn't we make this work? And I think the answer that we've gotten is yes. We don't have a specific number on what it's going to cost to accommodate them specifically, because otherwise, you were saying, oh, we need a fence, and, oh, we need to change this railing, and, oh, we need to do some ADA updates, and, you know, there's some known things, but specifically, we're, you know, in this very loose figure of $1.5 million to do it. And that's come from facilities for the, to, to do the customization, furniture purchases, all of artwork, whatever goes into there, before we open to the public. I don't know if that's specific enough.
So, so then I'm clear on the cost we're estimating. It's 600K to do the fixes on the condition, plus $1.5 million to do the customization and modification.
That's our estimate right now.
So we're over $2 million on top of the $7 million.
Yeah.
Okay. I also want us to think creatively, while we're saying, well, the county's going to foot the bill, that we think about, as the behavioral health reform and our state legislator's support, that we're thinking about a regional youth comprehensive system that we engage as we move to the next step. But I want to say this now, because it impressed me that it needs to be a regional planning, also centering youth, but that we think creatively that we have sponsors, foundations, people could sponsor the entry, people could sponsor an intergenerational space for grandparents raising a grief space. You know, it struck me that one of you, I think you said, or maybe it was someone else that mentioned, we have a lot of need for grief because so many children are losing their parents' doing to the fentanyl opioid crisis. That's very sad, and so can we rally the surrounding regional community and funders and individual sponsors and corporate sponsors to help with modification, to make it really the state of the art, and that it's just not a county investment? I just want to put that out there so we can think about creating community and not doing a bricks and mortars building just for services, which is a huge difference. Thanks.
Did you have any follow-up for that? Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the tour this morning. I was very impressed with the building, it's beautiful. It obviously needs a lot of upkeep and care and tearing down the walls and, and all that, but I think it could be made very light and spacious. But I think I was particularly struck by the enthusiasm you showed for the building. You know, you definitely wanted to buy this building, and, and you had looked at like six other buildings or something, this is the first one that really fits the bill. And so I appreciate that, and I appreciate your enthusiasm for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Michelle, and thank you, Chanelle. I got to take the tour last Friday and really appreciated it. I've actually known this building for a long time, and it's great to be a part of potentially the next use of it, and to bring county behavioral health services for the youth into it. I want to caution rushing into this, right? Negotiate hard, this is an expensive building. Let's do our due diligence, let's make sure that these upgrades or these problems with the buildings are identified, and then we negotiate into those. And so if it's $600,000 worth of, of, you know, infrastructure needs, let's not say like upgrades or fixes, or like customization, that we negotiate into that. I really think that there's an opportunity for us to save that money now, and do that work now, because if you're buying a building, you want to, you don't want to do too much work after you move in, right? It's too disruptive, you have, you know, it costs more when you try to bid, you know, other projects and fixes after you've moved somebody in, and then your tenants are, you know, there's a jackhammer up above me, isn't this supposed to be a therapy space? Yeah, well, let's get a lot of that work done so that we have three, five years' worth of, of some sort of clarity and peace and quiet, and let, ramp up this. And so I don't think rushing this is the object. I think getting it right, saving the money, if it's $600,000 to upgrade the HVAC, or redo the roof, or fix some sidewalks, let's negotiate that into the price. One of the things I did like in this site, and if you look at the site plan, is, I'm not sure which direction that is, I think it's to the south, or the east, or the west, is that west side of the parking lot has the ability to look at some dormitories or housing for some families that could become much more of a regional or inpatient sort of facility for some kids that are at risk. And so it'd be good to make sure that that is viable. I've looked at it, and I've looked at the setbacks, and I know there's a conditional use sort of aspect to this with the city, but let's double-check to make sure that that is viable there, and, and it looks like it's the right size to get, you know, a good couple thousand square feet, maybe 10, 12 rooms for some kids that otherwise wouldn't be able to come down here once a week, and it's too far of a stretch. Next, sidewalks in the neighborhood. If there's a bus stop nearby, that's great, but there should be a sidewalk from the bus stop at least to this location. And I, I know when we were looking at the DA's building, a potential site there a couple months ago, we looked at the lack of sidewalks in this entire development. I don't know if that's our responsibility, I actually think it's possible that it's the City of Santa Fe's responsibility at this point, but considering that we are probably partnering with the city at some level in this, we should ask for some sidewalks to get from Rodeo Road all the way to this location so that folks can, can walk from a bus stop or from other conveniences, right? You want to go walk to Poses for a burrito? You can't, you got to walk in the street, right? That's, that's inappropriate. And so whether it's for ADA accessibility, we just had disability pride recognition a few minutes ago, we should be incorporating that into this, and so that's a deficiency in this building, right? And so I don't know if the appraisers look at it that way, but I do. So if it's $60,000 to get sidewalks to Rodeo Road, let's negotiate that into the price. Two other aspects that I think we have to look into. One, when we were taking the tour, we looked, somebody made the comment about fencing along the south side of the property towards the highway. You don't want to make this look like a jail, but you do want to make sure that if a kid is in crisis, that they don't make a run for it towards the highway. And so there's some fast traffic, there's train tracks right over there, there's a bunch of things that we need to make sure that that, that access is cut down and things are as safe in that direction as possible. So I wouldn't gate or fence the whole property, but I might look at creating some sort of, some light fencing to keep people from making a dash in that direction. Lastly, solar, we do a lot of upgrades, and I think our package of real estate in the county includes solar upgrades, and so I think that should be included in the upgrade package. That can be done after the fact in the parking lot, it's less disruptive as compared to interior remodeling, but I think that that should be part of our vision here, and going to the, maybe the legislature, and being ready for this legislative session with an ask for all of these upgrades, right? And so that if we buy this building in September, we start getting all the design work done, and by the time we get to November and January, we're able to go to the legislature and say, we need $3 million more just to do these upgrades, and so that we can do it now, do it right, be ready, don't disrupt the operations in six months because we didn't have the money, let's do it right upfront. So I am in support of this, I think it's a nice place for Santa Fe County to step up into our regional needs, but it is expensive, and so I do want us to not rush and to be as comprehensive upfront as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The only thing I'll say is, I'm familiar with the building, and I really also as well appreciate your excitement for what it really could be, because honestly, my first thought was, this is great, and the, I hear everything that's being said from the DA's, and I think in the interest of just assuring that it's said out loud, that we do make sure that those improvements are part of the negotiations, and I think that we know that Manager Schaefer would definitely do that. It's, it's critical to say that out loud. To have it to a point where it's completely done before we start doing anything is letting perfection get in the way of the good. I think it's operational, I think you've made it clear that it can be operational in quick time. I absolutely agree that we wouldn't want to have pardon our dust signs, but I think in the big picture, what we do to start assisting young people in their, in their world of behavioral health and trauma, is, we don't have time to wait on that either, and I would rather have us moving forward and starting to address the needs of our youth than making sure that things are just exactly the way they need to be. Again, I would like to ask for someone to make a motion either way. Commissioner Hughes?
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution granting the county manager authority to negotiate the purchase and acquisition of office space in Santa Fe to support the functions of the Community Service Department Regional Youth Behavioral Health Center.
And we have a motion from Commissioner Hughes, we have a second.
A second?
We have a second from Commissioner Kakari Stone, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, may we have a resolution number, please?
Madam Chair, item 6D is Resolution 2025-086.
Thank you. We are five minutes into our comments. We have matters of public concern, and I'm going to guarantee you that we have, I will invite you to go ahead and take your short, short break as you need to, because I'm sure we're going to hear from someone about our timeliness on this particular matter. But we are going to cover things as we need to, and we're not going to cut things short if we have very big decisions to make, and I will make that very clear, if we have a $7 million discussion to be had, and it takes delaying the next part of that process, we're going to do it. All right? So let's go ahead and do public, items of public concern. Matters of public concern, is there anyone from the chambers who would like to speak? Okay, go ahead and approach.
Chair Bustamante, would you like me to display a timer?
Yes, please, three minutes.
Thank you. Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Sid Monroe, and I'm here representing nearly 200 of your constituents in the so-called Area 1B of District 2, who recently backed a new petition calling for action and support from this commission. It has come to our attention, to our attention, that this petition, which was recently recorded with the county clerk, will be discussed in executive session this evening. We simply ask that you give careful consideration to our petition, and we remind you that two years ago, this commission unanimously approved a similar petition on its merits. At that time, the residents of Area 1B provided many hours of testimony, and hundreds and hundreds of pages of supporting documents, maps, and historical evidence. All of this is in the public record and should be available to you should you need it. Thank you for your time now, and thank you for your consideration later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Do we have people online?
Chair Bustamante, we have three people online. Our first speaker is William Henry Me.
Thank you. Go ahead, William Me.
This is William Me with the Awafria Village Association, and has come to the attention of the association that the residents of Area 1B have filed a new petition with Santa Fe County to become a part of the traditional historic community of Awafria Village. We fully support these residents in their quest for self-determination, that will be discussed later in the executive session today. We simply ask that you give consideration to their petition, and that they, two years ago, this commission unanimously approved a similar petition based on the historical research that the residents did, and how they related it back to Awafria Village. The residents of Area 1B have been the target of a city annexation as early as 1990, that is 35 years of this community being in a no man's land that has thrown planning for their future in total limbo. You know, the commission acting to accept this petition will protect them and reverse that 35 years of limbo. Thank you for your time now and consideration later in the executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Me. Next?
Chair Bustamante, our next Chair Bustamante, our next speaker is Julie Remeyer.
Okay, Ms. Renegator? Renegator? I don't see her. Let's see.
Ms. Remeyer, please unmute your microphone and continue.
My name is Julie Remeyer, and I live at 87 Rio and Medio Road. Three days and, three years and three days ago, the largest flood in living memory ripped through the village of Rio and Medio. It endangered many of my neighbors' homes. It tore out the stream bed through my property, sinking the stream four feet. It exposed the foundations of my bridge, endangering my only access to my house. And most critically, it swept away the road that provides access to the tanks for our community water system, the county's open space, and my next door neighbor's house. We were grateful when the county stepped in as sponsor for the Emergency Watershed Protection Program funding, providing 25% of the cost. However, the part of the project that's most essential for the health of the entire community, restoring access to the water tanks that 55 households rely on for drinking water, has gotten cut from the project and sent to an unfunded Phase 2 that is in danger of never happening. I'm speaking to ask the Commissioners to support county funding for this essential part of the project. These problems came about because initial estimates assumed that the road could be restored with a method that turned out not to work. That became clear during the design phase, and the revised plan, which also protects our bridge, became significantly more expensive. Without enough funding for the entire project, the EWP pushed this to a second unfunded phase. Then the Phase 1 bids came in, and those costs were also far higher than expected. The county has agreed to provide additional matching funds for Phase 1, but Phase 2 is now languishing. The EWP says that without funding, it has now fallen to the bottom of their list of projects, and new projects are coming in every day. This isn't just about my property, though of course I want it protected. It's also not just about 55 households who depend on that water, nor is it only about allowing my neighbor to once again have particular access to her property. At 78 years old, she's having to walk a couple hundred yards across a stream just to get groceries into her house. It's also about the county being able to get vehicles in to access the open space. There's discussion at the moment about putting parking for the beloved Rio and Medio Trail in the open space, and that can't happen without a road. With federal funding sources drying up quickly and the date of the event getting farther in the rearview mirror, please take action now. Please include all parts of the project in a single funding request. Let the NRCS know that you're committed to completing the work they've defined and that you'll provide the 25% match for all parts of the project. And please keep pushing for speedy completion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Bustamante, our next speaker is Chris Michels.
Head, Mr. Nichols?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, the issue I wish to, the issue I wish to take up to the board today is very serious. It has a lot to do with the operations of the Commissioners. So please, for the other Commissioners, pay attention. The issue I'm raising is the fact that the Board of Commissioners of Santa Fe is not in compliance with their rules of order, which is how you run your Commission meetings. These rules of order date back to 2009, which is when they were last passed. Traditionally, you pass these rules of order every year with the OMA resolution, and after 2009, you stopped doing so. Well, it seems like you've forgotten that you've got rules of order. So when you, when the Chair at the beginning of the meeting says, I call you to alter order, which she's doing procedurally, she's calling you to those rules of order. I suspect you don't even know they exist. They, they, they go to some, they go into some detail as to how the board, the, the meeting will be held, and it might help you to stop having agenda failures, as you just, as I just witnessed, where you ran very, very, very long and accomplished virtually nothing by doing so, except to say that you were warm people with a consider, with a considerate heart. These, this is not just the Chair. The Chair, though, the Chair is, is really involved, because she refuses to post the rules of order on the agenda site with the, with OMA. Part of the reason may be because she doesn't comply with the rules of order and doesn't wish to, though they are a requirement. So when I, I, I've communicated with her this directly, and this, and she refused to do it. She maintained she's following the rules of order. She's not. And you can prove it directly by looking at the minutes. I queried her again, then she claimed that she's following Robert's rules of order. She's not. This, you can just look at the minutes and see that's clearly false. So I got two false claims, no explanation of why it's so offensive to her to post the rules of order on the site so the public can actually see what you're doing, how your meetings ought to be run, and it might help you to actually run constructive meetings. This is not just the culprit. All of you have an obligation to the rules of order. You, you have the authority to call up point of order when they're not being followed, and it's up to you to do so. So it isn't just the Chair. If the rest of you do your job, because you're also all sworn to follow the rules of order, then this would stop happening. If you look at the other, if you look at other counties and just look at even Santa Fe City, these people have rules of order, they follow them. You are standing out there in your splendid ignorance, refusing to follow the rules of order, for what reason I know not. But please, get in line, all of you. Thanks.
No, no, thank you. Okay, let's do this. We now will take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Our first presentation is Santa Fe County's Lodger Tax Program. We have 15 to 20 minutes. Thank you very much for attention to the time.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lisa Katonic, Marketing Coordinator for the Santa Fe County Community Development Department. And I have a couple of special guests that I'd like to recognize. With us, we have Madam Chair, LTAB Chair, Dawn Ibis, with Bishop's Lodge Obergeiss Resorts Collection, right over here. Also, not present, but I'd also like to acknowledge the rest of the LTAB Advisory Board members. We also have Madam Vice Chair, Jennifer Gergis, representing the lodging industry for Four Seasons Resort Rancho in Cantado. Board Member Jennifer Coker with Kit Fox, representing tourism-related activities. She does a great glamping experience in the Galistea Basin. Board Member Rich Hedley with Beer Creek Brewing Company. And Board Member Richard Lavalli, presenting the at-large member position. Also with me today, I have to the right, CEO Desiree Vega Garcia with Sunny 505. And last but not least, Dave Haydock, Senior Strategist for Sunny 505. And thank you so much for having us this afternoon. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
So this afternoon, we're going to be covering the Lodger's Tax Update from the fiscal year 25. We're going to discuss our marketing strategy, how we leverage the New Mexico True brand from the New Mexico Tourism Department, our tourism's economic impact in Santa Fe County, the visitor profile of our visitors, Lodger's Tax Collection performance for the fiscal year, our marketing advertising campaign, as well as our True brand strategy, our New Mexico Tourism Department fiscal year 25 co-op marketing grant program that we opted into, digital campaign, print campaign, public relations, earned media, social media, Santa Fe County's travel guide, our collaboration with Travels with Darley, website, newsletter, and insider blog, and our Lodger's Tax Grant programs that we support for our local nonprofit organizations, as well as ongoing projects.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you so much for having us here today. Our marketing strategy is really that we're all travelers, enjoying everything that Santa Fe County has to offer. And then we have a wide distribution to our target markets, which include California, Texas, Oklahoma, Arizona, New Mexico. We want to make sure our locals come and enjoy the county as well. And we focus on, our imagery is all New Mexico True, so because Santa Fe County is New Mexico True. Lisa talked a little bit about how we leverage the New Mexico True branding. There's a couple of reasons why we do this. The first is that this brand has over a decade of recognition. I know that I've traveled lots of places and people see me with my Zia pride and they say, "Oh, New Mexico True, I know New Mexico True." So it's nationally recognized, which we're really proud of. And I believe it's actually up for a national award right now as well. We also are able to tap into the state's vast buying power. They have about fifteen million dollars to spend. So our strategy is always let them spend all of that big money talking about New Mexico, creating awareness about New Mexico. And then we get to come in behind them and say, "Hey, Santa Fe County is where you want to go in New Mexico." We also focus on authentic experiences, sight doing, people doing activities, hiking, skiing, enjoying everything that we have to offer here. And then, of course, rich culture and our activities and outdoor adventures as well. For about the past six months, we opted into, we started to opt into a program that allows us to actually see the economic impact of our efforts. One of the things that it does is measure trips. So this information is calendar year, January 2025 to May 24, 2025. So far, we've had over 600,000 trips to Santa Fe County. Visitor days are a little over three million. And then the average length of stay is five, 5.1 days, a little over five days. We're really excited to be able to present this information. Visitor spending, this cumulative visitor spending for that time period is a little over sixty-three million dollars. And that's, that's everything, lodging, activities, restaurants, et cetera. The other thing that this system allows us to do as well is identify where people are coming from. So I talked a little bit about our target markets being Texas, Colorado, California, New Mexico, Arizona, and Oklahoma. And as you can see, this is a sampling of some of the visitation. That's who's coming and visiting our community. Texas is the number one visitor. I think Dallas is actually the number one city. They're coming and they're spending a lot of money, and we like that. Our Lodger's Tax Collection performance, so this is, this number's actually a little bit old. The new number is two million... Seven hundred, give me one second. Two million, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. So this was through April, and now the, the new number's a little bit higher than that. So you can see we've had a decent increase over the last several years. I think I hit the wrong thing. I'm going to pass this over to Dave so he can talk a little bit about our tools.
Thank you, Des. Thank you very much. You know, you hear about the data and you hear about the information geographic, where are people coming to Santa Fe County from? Well, we take all that data and we kind of wrap it in, and then smart marketing put together the tools to the toolbox that'll help deliver on our message to the travelers, so that we pinpoint our messaging at the precise time, so they get what we're talking about. That's adventure, steeped in culture. So these are some of the tools in that toolbox that we use that are very targeted in every aspect that we use them. What I love about public relations is, one, it's free, but two, it's also very organic. In a lot of ways, the people would digest content, especially the younger people today, is all this content that they're able to gather up about places they'd like to go travel. PR gives us a good opportunity to put it in another voice that really resonates with our target. You know, then, of course, social media, we're creating conversation. That create, conversations created through content that we feed into it. Then we get more people that follow us. So we'll be able to use each of these tools in order to make people make a trip here to Santa Fe County. This is the genius behind the whole strategy of the program. This is the funnel. This is where Des talked about fifteen million dollars spent by the Department of Tourism. They're out there telling people about New Mexico. The light goes off once they go, "I want to go visit New Mexico," because they have this great adventure. They have this great culture that my family and I are going to be able to enjoy. So once they're inspired, they then begin to take a look at, "Where am I going to go in New Mexico to get that experience?" Well, that's where we come in with our budget and drive consideration. And that's done through the different tools of the media on the left and our, our KPIs on the right. So we get people then to start to say, "Okay, where am I going to go? Santa Fe County." And once we got them to drive that action movement, they'll then start to consider where they're going to book that trip at what hotel here in Santa Fe County. So that's where we get them on the conversion piece of this funnel. So that's how we work this process. And as Des showed you in the previous slide, is how it's been successful over the years.
Part of what we leverage with the New Mexico Tourism Department is their co-op program. And it really allows us to opt into some buying power that we might not necessarily have on our own. This past year in FY 2025, we received almost three hundred thousand dollars in grant funds from the state of New Mexico. And it allowed us to run some very specific digital advertising through paid social. We did some sponsored content, which is essentially, I liken that to an advertorial and print publications. We also participated in some streaming television programming. We did a, a program with the Dallas Outdoor, which allowed us to kind of rotate our boards all over the place and kind of give it the illusion that we were everywhere, which is excellent. The impressions we received for this campaign, and it just wrapped up in June, were a little over sixteen million. So this is a really beneficial program for us to be opting into, and we get a two-to-one match. So they match us two dollars for every one dollar that we spend. In addition to what we do with... In addition to what we do with New Mexico Tourism Department, we also have a really robust digital print campaign. So Dave, or Gabe's going to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission for having us today to talk about your program. As Desiree mentioned, because of the support of the Commission in collaboration with the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board and staff, we have implemented, continued to implement a very robust marketing campaign that reaches travelers across a variety of target markets and also interests as well. You'll see on your slides about the digital campaign that takes up about seventy-five percent of our marketing efforts. When we say digital campaign, that essentially means we're reaching audiences wherever that they're consuming digital media. If that's on their mobile devices, if that's on their computers, if that's on their streaming televisions, any, any sort of channel you can imagine where we are identifying the right travelers to invite to Santa Fe County. So I'll go down the list here. In January and February, we have an anchor message of holiday skiing and spas. And we optimize our messages towards travelers who are interested in, in outdoor adventures, culinary adventures, and arts and culture. In March and April, we focus on inviting travelers that have a propensity to select spa adventures and, and, you know, cultural experiences. And then May and June, we really get to talk about all the wonderful outdoor recreation opportunities that exist here, here in Santa Fe County. I do want to mention that an exciting part of our digital advertising efforts is that you can probably imagine that the markets that we're in, especially Texas and California, are extremely expensive media markets. But because we have the ability to target precisely the travelers who we are interested in inviting to Santa Fe County, that's how we're able to, to keep that program really cost efficient and precise because of that. Next up, I think, I think a big part of our program, twenty-five percent is our print program. Again, because of the support of the, of the Commission, Lodger's and Tax Advisory Board, we're able to reach some really high-profile publications with Santa Fe County messaging. Those include Conde Nast, Travel and Leisure, Adventure Art Outdoors, New Mexico Travel Adventure Guide, Texas Monthly, and Group Tour Magazine. We, we know from lots of research in the space that, that folks continue to make buying decisions and traveling decisions with publications such as these. So that's why this has continued to be a large part of our program. And it also provides us a window to highlight some of that incredible imagery and incredible messaging that we've, we've kind of co-created with you all to highlight the beautiful things in Santa Fe County. I also, do you want to mention that each of these print assets also include a digital function? So we're able to tap into the, the vast network example, for example, Conde Nast, we're able to tap into their, their digital viewers, their email subscribers, to create that wraparound experience for a traveler. Alongside this tactically, we also know that consumers are much more likely to make a decision about where they travel if they see a new story about exactly, exactly that, the destination at hand. In, in collaboration with all, with, with all of you, we've been able to garner just under twelve hundred stories in FY 25 through proactive pitching and relationship building with the national news media. Some of those selections include Vogue Magazine, Forbes Magazine, Fast Company. These are publications that I'm sure we all interact with on a day-to-day basis. And these are exactly the, the type of audiences that we're wanting to bring into Santa Fe County. Overall, you can see that from the data that we have available to us, that, that a hundred and forty-one million dollars worth of public relations value have been garnered through this program. So this is just one other tactic that, that Dave Haydock was mentioning, that is a really big part of what we do on your behalf on an annual basis. We can all agree that social media continues to dominate our, our consciousness. We, I think folks need to know that social media cuts across a variety of demographics. All the way from someone my age, all the way to someone a little bit older. We, we know that social media is, is absolutely a, an important tool in the toolbox that we have to use to make sure to get Santa Fe County messaging, Santa Fe County messaging in front of consumers. We do know that our social media campaign has been very successful. Just in this year alone, new likes and followers for Facebook have increased by thirty-eight percent, while interactions have increased by a hundred and eighteen percent. Instagram followers have increased a hundred and thirteen percent, and our ability to reach accounts has increased almost three hundred percent. So you can see that we continue to grow the Santa Fe County tourism accounts year over year. And it's, we're continuing to test out new formats, like, like videos, reels, other, other formats to be able to show, to show folks how, how great Santa Fe County is. So I'm going to turn back to Desiree. Thank you.
We also do, we produce annually our Santa Fe County Travel Guide. We distribute this to about eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred and eighty sites throughout the Southwest and California. This is, we have about fifty-five thousand that we've printed, and we've probably distributed about half thus far. I keep going back to the wrong one. This year, we also did a collaboration with Darlene Newman. She's a travel writer that works for PBS. She has a podcast that she partners with iHeart Media, so we were able to get some really interesting stories in our partnership with her. She does a lot of great added value for us as well through collaborative posts on social. We also do some PR with her as well. She's always happy to be a spokesperson if we get her on some local, some local publications. And this took place in the springtime. The website is really the hub of all of our communications, so everything that we're doing pushes back to the website. Even we have QR codes without, throughout our travel guide. Everything pushes back to the website because we want to make sure that people are getting to the website, looking at our itineraries, going to the lodging properties, and being able to book and plan their trip to Santa Fe County. So we've successfully been able to increase users, website sessions, and page views. And we measure page views because it's really important to have people stay on the site. We want them to come, but we also want them to engage with content as well. So we like to measure that, to make sure that they're staying on the site with us. We also do a monthly newsletter. We focus on culinary arts, outdoor activities. There are several topics that we focus on. This gets posted on all of our, our social, along with our website as well. Really helps with that content on the website for search engine optimization purposes, because we need to constantly be adding content to the site. So we, we do this every month. I talked a little bit about the New Mexico True Grant that we opted into, but Lisa also manages several grants separate from what we're doing. So I'm going to pass that over to her to talk about.
Santa Fe County Lodger's Tax Grant Program has two programs for the public to apply for. Through our Santa Fe County Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Marketing Advertising and Promotion Grant Program, the fiscal year 25 grant funding cycle awarded eighteen organizations to support their efforts in advertising their tourism attractions and events and festivals. This next slide is a list of all of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Grant recipients, from International Folk Art to Wildlife Association down in Edgewood, the Santa Fe Century Bike Race, El Runcho de las Golondrinas in La Cienega, Santa Fe Desert Corral, Parallel Studios for Currents New Media, the Santa Fe Downtown Kiwanis Foundation for Burning of Sazobra and Dia de los Muertos, the Santa Fe Opera for their 2025 season, the Museum of New Mexico for one of their new exhibits, The World Above Us. That is currently now at the museum. Site Santa Fe for their twelfth international exhibit. The Santa Fe Children's Museum for their year-round museum programming. The City of Espanola for their light parade. The Santa Fe Film Institute for their Santa Fe Independent Film Festival. And the Lightning Boy Foundation as a fiscal agent for the Santa Fe Half Marathon, now in September. The Attrisco Heritage Foundation for the Traditional Spanish Market and Winter Spanish Market. And the Human Rights Alliance for Pride Santa Fe for June 2025, and the Center for the Photo Symposium for 2025, as well as the Santa Fe Playhouse. For our first year, in this second grant program, we introduced a pilot program called the Tifa Pilot Program. The Tifa is a Tourism Event Facilities Attraction Grant, providing small grants to nonprofit organizations that support their tourism attractions or events through infrastructure. And so these are the seven recipients. As you noticed, some of them are duplicates from the previous list. Some that are new is Girls, Inc., and of course, Madrid Cultural Projects. And wrapping up on our ongoing projects for our Summer Media Blitz, we are wrapping up our Summer Media Blitz campaign. We are continuing our marking efforts to promote the Route 66 Centennial Celebration that occurs in the fall of 2026, in anticipation of our visitors that will be visiting both the year before the centennial, during the centennial, and after the centennial, and celebrating one hundred years of the historic Mother Road. We're going to be expanding into the California market with the San Francisco Bay Area, Oakland, and San Jose area via digital advertising, leveraging the New Mexico Tourism Department's advertising spend in the market, which has paved the way for us to enter into the market. Ongoing engagement with our destination platform provider, which is Datify, for comprehensive and comprehensive data analytics and strategic advertising, collecting and reporting economic impact of hospitality and tourism industry, our spending insights, and economic impact of events and festivals, because we do know that the visitors do enjoy coming to visit Santa Fe County year-round, but they... but they in particular are interested in events and festivals. Visitor Engagement Platform, uh, which is our visit widget, which is to highlight attractions and events for the visitor through a fully branded app featuring itinerary building and curated experiences. And that is on our website as well as as an app for travelers to get the most out of their trip. And this concludes our presentation and we stand for questions and I thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Lisa and her team? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you for the presentation. I'm actually kind of surprised that you didn't lead off with, we're the number one tourist destination in the, in the country, which deserves some recognition. And honestly, I think the city decided to take all the, all the credit. And I think it's a collaboration between us too, even if we don't necessarily collaborate so much. So we've done it, um, now we've done it, uh-oh. The, one of the things I'd really like to, uh, look into is, um, a variety of things. So first, California's big, Texas is big, right? And so, um, those are not monolithic markets. And so targeting San Francisco or the Bay Area, I think is, uh, is great. But starting to get into more specifics about who is coming and from what areas. And so, uh, you may already be doing that and you just aggregated as California or Texas and so on. But, um, I know that we are almost drive time from Lubbock and, and Amarillo and so on, but we're not really drive time from Austin. So it's a different, it's a different crew, it's a different type of travel and so on. So, um, I wonder if you have, uh, some insight into how you target those markets a little differently? Just to, I, I'll keep going with questions, but I'll give you a chance to respond to that.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much, Commissioner Green, for the questions. Um, and thank you for the reminder. I think it was probably nerves on my part that I failed to mention. Um, Santa Fe did, uh, come in as number one, um, with the Travel and Leisure, uh, awards. We also have some great, um, updates. Um, Santa Fe was number 15 in the world, uh, for a destination. Bishop's Lodge Obergeorge Resorts Collection also came in as number two resort in the West. Um, so that's a big accomplishment. Um, also 10,000 Waves came in in their top spa resorts, uh, category. And then finally, um, our Four Seasons Resort, Rontown Cantado, came in within, uh, the top five best hotels in Santa Fe. They came in number two. So I do want to acknowledge, um, our Lodger's Tax Advisory Board members and those that represent, uh, the lodging industry because many of the properties that were acknowledged on this awards list, um, came from the county. So, um, in regard to our information, um, as we look at the data and where visitors are coming from, we have markets or maps that we're able to identify where they're coming from. Um, for example, we're getting some travel from New York. We like to target them for opera, um, or fashion. Um, so a good example of that is the Native Fashion Week, uh, that occurs in May. There's two different events that occur. And, um, they created quite a buzz this past year and we're hoping to develop some of those assets a little bit more. Um, this is a perfect opportunity for us because it is not peak season. Um, so the rates are lower and it draws in a crowd. So, um, we're looking at markets and events and we're doing overlapping in, in our data analytics.
Do you want to speak to that?
No, I mean, I did want to comment on the Lubbock connection. That we can see how often they're coming into town. And I can actually get a breakdown of exactly where everybody's coming from and do a follow-up for that. Surprisingly, we've been targeting them through our digital efforts and they don't come into town as much as Dallas does and they don't spend as much money as Dallas does.
Right.
So it's, it's, it's interesting what this tool can tell us because we make all these assumptions about things and then the data says, no, you're wrong.
Yeah.
But we have been targeting them through our, through our digital efforts.
Excellent. Um, you know, uh, native, to follow on to the Native Fashion Week, if we can double down on that, that was one of my favorite events that I've seen in a long time. Uh, the, the vibrancy, uh, the youth that was here, seeing native youth in Santa Fe. Super excited to be here from all over. I mean, there were people from Canada. Um, they were from all over the United States and Alaska. It was a really, you know, Swaya and Indian Market's amazing. Honestly, I thought the Native Fashion Week was even cooler. It was like emergent, you really felt that, that new vibrancy there. And especially for the fact that it's an off-season, right? You know, you can't sell another hotel room at Indian Market Week, right? Why bother, right? But you can sell a lot more rooms for Native Fashion Week and, and really fill up this place. The film festivals, right? So we tried to go, you were probably a part of trying to get, uh, Sundance here. And, uh, you know, if we were willing to, you know, work with the state and with the city and all of the partners to get Sundance here, all that money that we were willing to put in towards that, uh, maybe we should look at trying to build our own film festivals, like to a bigger, more vibrant level. I know that there's a new film, or maybe not film festival, but there's a new pilot festival that's being talked about around here that could dovetail alongside, uh, both of the film festivals. And really, since we are trying to invest in the film industry in terms of studios and production, having this place be discovered by people that are in the industry, it seems like it's a, a synergistic, um, opportunity to sell Santa Fe as a location at the same time as being really in the thought leadership of the film industry. And so finding ways to pair those two things up, uh, I think is a opportunity to make tourism work for economic development. Along those lines also, tourism working for economic development is when you have an opportunity to go over, like with executive recruiters, like start to target, uh, both the site readiness and, and the lifestyle for the executives, right? So, um, when somebody is looking to relocate or to find a place for them to move that part of their company, uh, economic development should be working with you in a way to target those people so that once they give economic development, uh, you know, they get the hook, that you are providing digital media and making them not forget, right? Man, I don't know why, are they listening to my phone, right? I mean, are they like sending, right? We all suspect that and, you know, you can, you can work that as well. Balloon Fiesta as well. Uh, I actually find that Balloon Fiesta is a, it's not our event, it's Albuquerque's event, but it seems like it's so big that the spillover, nobody comes to Santa Fe. Nobody has anything to do in Albuquerque after 9:30 in the morning and they all come up here. So finding ways to capture that crowd, they may not stay here, that's okay, but to give them things to do and to say three, four, five of their days, should, their afternoon should be up here and finding ways to make sure that those people are, um, are coming up here. You know, I, I brought this up in the past. I, and I really want to sort of see a presentation as to how our apps and our products that can be used in the digital sphere, uh, are evolving. You know, we have, I've, I've brought this up in the past, I want to, like, we have, how many of these studio tours? Galistejo Studio Tour, El Dorado Studio Tour, Santa Fe Studio Tour. And all of those studios exist 365 days in the year. They collaborate just one weekend or maybe one day a year for a studio tour. But that doesn't mean that those studios are closed. That just means that they haven't made a way to market together. And if we created a studio tour app or an events app that had a studio tour aspect, any of these studios could just toggle on, I'm open. It's Saturday afternoon and I'm willing to open my studio for three hours. If you're driving by, come on, drop by. The same thing would happen in Madrid, would happen in Curiros, would happen in El Dorado, would happen in Aguafria Village, it could happen all over the place. And to have that opportunity for people and stores to toggle on little things, galleries, 20% off, whatever, my place is open and is not normally open. That gives a dynamicism to our arts market and it gives us an opportunity to, to, you know, capture people and to, to be there. I'm just thinking out there and there's partners to do this with. But I really love what you guys do. I want you to double down on these things. I would love us to invest in assets that work for all of us. And I guess my last question is, is how do you track whether we use open space, right? We've invested in open space using tourism dollars. Do our tourists actually use open space? Is it county open space or do they just go to the ski basin? So to...
I'm glad you asked that, Mr. Green. We will be able to track that. Using Datify, we're able to hexagon specific areas. So we'll be able to see if people are going and using open space. And on the economic development front, if there's events we want to test, this software will also allow us to determine if it was a successful event. We can see how much traffic came into town because of it. We can see how much money they spent because they came into town. So it's a, it's a really good way for us to inform decisions moving forward.
Cool. I'd love to see more information about that at some time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Kakari Stone?
I love your branding. Thank you, Chair Bustamante. Uh, I just had a thought and it goes to, why can't tourism be also educational tourism? In cross, um, cultural exchanges? For example, we're part of the Camino Real de Adentro de la Tierra that goes to Mexico City. And if we look at the airlines, American and United that come into the Santa Fe Airport, what, what connecting flights, right? It's Dallas and Denver. And from there, for example, there's quite a bit of money in Mexico City, Ciudad Mexico. Why aren't we doing some more advertising and getting more tourists from other countries and globally? Because people, everywhere you ever go, people heard of Santa Fe. And I think we need to, and it's the border state, so we should capitalize on our cultural, educational tourism and maybe include the local community and the traditional villages and have things around the Camino Real. Those are just thoughts I had and, uh, moving beyond this, this transnational exchange, which is great. We need the money, you know, hotels, tourism, food, culture, the opera. But we have a lot more here than just that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all of you for that really interesting presentation, beautiful images, uh, as, as I would expect from a marketing team. Um, I have a couple of questions that are kind of in a random order. To what extent does the counties, does the county work at the city's tourism department? Is, are they just separate? Whenever, when I look at information from the county's, you know, tourism wing, so to speak, you know, you, you notice if you know the county well, that it's all entities in the county. Makes sense. But there's, I, I'm wondering how integrations could be helpful. A lot of the entities that you fund are actually in the city through the Lodger's Tax Program and the grant program, Tifa even. Um, so what are the, what's the interface with tourism in the city?
Thank you so much for that question. Just recently, we've been approached as an advisory board to you commissioners from the Lodging Tax Advisory Board for the city. And they want much more collaboration. As we've grown the lodging tax dollars in the county with all these efforts, yours and the efforts of the advertising agency, we're getting just short of $3 million a year. That is now enough that we can use, leverage that money, 50% of which will always go towards marketing and advertising to work with the city. So just recently, we are going to cross-purpose the two boards and we, they have an ex officio seat and they've approached us to have somebody from the county sitting on their board that can, um, integrate and find ways that we can either use the funds or move the efforts forward even without dollars. So for example, during the same conversation, the, um, city of Santa Fe purchased the little emblem to say we're the number one city voted by Travel and Leisure. You actually have to purchase the right to be able to use that. And there was discussion, can we use it as the county as well? They've already paid for it. We're the same. Nobody thinks Santa Fe County versus Santa Fe in some respects. So I just want you to know that in the past 30 to 45 days, we've really gotten into this and we're going to do a lot more between the two lodging tax boards because they have quite a bit more money. And even if it's not dollars that are being shared, it can be efforts and outreach.
Thanks. That, that's good to hear. Cause it, as you just pointed out, it's totally natural integration. No one thinks, I'm going to go to Santa Fe County. They think Santa Fe, they think a big area and it involves a lot of our, um, our assets. So, um, this sort of came to mind during the presentation. Is there any initiative for wedding-based tourism? Um, and I, I sort of asked that because a lot of the venues are outside of the city limits in the county. It seems like Santa Fe is a destination, place for a wedding, especially in the West. It's drivable, uh, people stay overnight. I'm interested in hearing more about weddings.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, for the question. In regard to group tourism and weddings. So wedding tourism is very popular. It came about, um, post-COVID, um, that everyone wanted to have a destination wedding in Santa Fe, Santa Fe County. Um, and unfortunately, I think, um, the market was very tight and, and so it was a little bit more difficult and some people maybe had to schedule a little bit further out than one year. But we have been targeting group tours and group travel for the past two years. It's an important, um, note, uh, that we have the convention center across from Santa Fe County's, um, admin building. However, many of our lodging properties out in the county have, uh, banquet, conference rooms and many facilities that would accommodate, uh, retreats or smaller, um, group gatherings. And so we have been working for the past two years on group tours and group travel. Um, and so it's not just leisure or business. We want people to come to Santa Fe County for business and stay for leisure. Bring their spouses, uh, bring their children. And so, um, in regard to group tours, uh, what we're finding is smaller groups that are targeting for outdoor adventure, for cycling, um, yoga retreats, incentive retreats for corporate, um, which is very important to note. And so we are getting some of those, uh, group, um, bookings.
Okay, good. That's, that's interesting to know. So I did see, I think it was called a gravel guide. I actually, now I can't really remember the year. But I think that that is a super useful because programmatic tool for tourism. So I want to commend whoever put that together. Because it, you know, as Commissioner Green asked, how many people are using open spaces? Well, the mountain biking community, the gravel biking community does use those and these are like useful assets for them or tools for them to find these places and, you know, make use of these, um, areas that we've set aside for that kind of recreation. So I think that was a creative and very well-designed product. I would encourage you all to think about, you know, ways to, to make those sorts of connections. With regard to the app, um, I think, if I, if I understand Commissioner Green correctly, I, I, I sort of echo wanting more data on that. It sounded like it's not totally, you know, ready for show. But, um, and correct me if I'm wrong. You know, if we have 15 different apps when you arrive in Santa Fe, it sometimes can be, well, which one am I using? And that's why I think the city-county can work together in this capacity. There shouldn't be three different apps, there should be one. At least in my opinion, uh, that sort of in, inform people about what's going on. And then that's from a government perspective and not from a private entity perspective. They, they can produce as many as they want. But I think that collaboration would be essential in the app space. Another question is about Tifa. So, um, let's see if I can find this very quickly and I won't take up all of our time. So you provided grants to seven organizations. And can you just say a little bit more about that? That did help them improve, it wasn't just for their own advertising, it was for helping them improve infrastructure because typically Lodger's Tax goes to advertising, right?
So it could be for signage for their tourism attraction or, uh, for example, Madrid. They have a lot of high-use, uh, visitors, uh, in the village. And so they have portable restrooms. This was an opportunity for them to be able to, um, have, shall I say, sanitary... This was an opportunity for them to be able to have, shall I say, sanitary, routine cleaning of those restrooms.
I see.
Important things that sometimes we don't really consider as big picture, but in the end, it's all about the visitor experience and what they come away with. And so we want to ensure that every visitor that comes to Santa Fe County has that great experience and isn't left with saying, oh gosh, those restrooms were a little.
Yeah. Okay. So that, that's interesting. And I, I think that's a good pilot project that, that the total is, is not, you know, is very insignificant compared to the rest of, of the spending. I think, you know, and I haven't fully thought this through, but another potential pilot project could be supporting lodging entities in the county. You know, as Commissioner Green has pointed out, District One has the sort of bulk of the well-established hotels, resorts, that kind of entity property. There are burgeoning ones in, you know, all of the districts, I would imagine. I know only in mine personally, you know, smaller entities that are mini ranches and what have you. A pilot project to help them sort of understand the lay of the land, so to speak, would be something that I think would be, could pay dividends for lodgers tax in Santa Fe County. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there. I don't know if you've ever had an internal discussion about something like that.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, for your thoughts on that. Actually, our Lodgers Tax Advisory Board has been discussing that very same thing in order to incorporate the visitor experience out into the county, whether they have a rental vehicle or they do not. We want them to go out into the county and experience the county assets, to dine there, to go to spa. And so there's opportunities, I believe, in order for us to grow that project and also enhance the visitor experience and also support the economy of Santa Fe County and the tourism and lodging industry.
Okay. I think I'll leave it there. But I appreciate the presentation and thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Hughes?
Just thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. It was very good and I'm really grateful for the recommendations and thoughts put forth to see how we can keep growing in this, Riscard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to our next presentation of the Water Policy Advisory Committee. We are asking for 15 minutes, 15 to 20, short, whatever works for you.
Short. Okay. Chair Bustamante and Commissioners, heading before you is the presentation of the Water Policy Advisory Committee, WPAK Second Quarterly Report 2025. And what I'm planning on doing here is just reading the, the two-page memo. You'll notice on page two of the memo is the key activities and accomplishments this quarter.
Yeah. And, and we have the memo, so you don't necessarily have to read it to us. But if you can just go over the highlights, we'd be grateful.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Chair Bustamante. Page two, sorry, page two of the memo, key activities and accomplishments this quarter include bulk water and wastewater service applications, Resolution Number 2025-121, compliance. WPAK reviewed two community applications for bulk water service and prepared internal memos outlining existing procedures and policies for how new developments in existing community systems may obtain water service from the county. Second activity update is La Senega, La Senegia preliminary engineering report and water planning study. The Drinking and Wastewater Management Working Group reviewed a consultant's rapid watershed assessment, participated in site visits to local water bodies, springs and properties with water features, and provide feedback on the findings. Third activity update, County Well Monitoring Program, La Senega, La Senegia pilot report and Phase Two work plan. The Drinking and Wastewater Management Working Group reviewed both documents and plans to meet with county staff in July to discuss lessons learned and receive updates on the plan. Fourth item, County Stormwater Management Program and Green Stormwater Infrastructure GSI Planning. Stormwater Management Working Group received briefings on the county stormwater program and the development of a GSI facility master plan and maintenance training guide. Group continues to learn about and engage with these initiatives. Next activity, coordination with state agencies on water data and mapping. The Outreach Working Group initiated collaboration with the New Mexico Environment Department, NMED, and the Office of the State Engineer, OSC, to update the septic tank, septic tank database and GIS mapping of wellhead meter diversions. It began analyzing data from several state sources to better identify well locations, estimate domestic well withdrawals, and assess potential impacts on shallow groundwater recharge. We've also obtained shape files for rojos and other watercourses and extracted relevant data from New Mexico Tech's water withdrawal study, sharing this and similar past studies with WPAK. And the last item on the progress update is education and outreach on watershed health and conservation. The Outreach Working Group leader met with Santa Fe Watershed Association, which expressed interest in supporting WPAK and the county through sharing materials, providing curriculum and training design, and potentially partnering on educational initiatives beyond the Santa Fe watershed. In line with the adopted reporting schedule, subsequent reports will be presented in October 2025 and January 2026. This is a presentation only. No action is required from the board at this time. Staff, stand for questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The first thing I want to say is thank you to everyone who works on this committee. It really matters. And I understand that you have a lot of balls in the air and everybody's juggling very, very well. In fact, it looks seamless. So thank you for the presentation. I understand also that you are working towards the Water Policy Summit, which I've had some preliminary conversation with Jacqueline Beam about how we can best affect that to make sure that the community, as well as us, as well as the board, understands where the water is coming from. Because that's the question we get asked every time we approve something. So I look forward to further communication regarding that matter and we can find a way to really better leverage that. Do we have any comments, questions, or concerns, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at Exhibit C, page, end of page four, top of page three. And this is task five of the, uh-oh, Drinking and Wastewater Management Group. And that task is pursue petition return flow credit application. The, I'll just read it, it's super short. Review of Paragraph Eight of the amended and restated Water Resources Agreement, WRA, between the City of Santa Fe and Santa Fe County, signed these dates, reveals that the county has no right to return flow from the city's wastewater treatment plant. This task is interpreted as support of the, of the city seeking return flow credit. The working group is not actively working on this task. I'm not sure if you or someone else can explain this a little bit more to me. We don't have a right to, to the return flow. Is that, what are the implications of that? And I guess I just need a little bit of context for that. Any would be helpful.
Commissioner Johnson, this particular activity, or I guess you could say, the nature of this project actually is, I think we all understand, is a certain amount of level of complications. And the situations are, I believe, sort of evolving between the city and the county, involves the state as well. So without having public works here to speak to that, or senior utility staff, I, I wouldn't attempt to, you know, elaborate on that, where that could be going, or ultimately what the county's, county's rights are to the return, to the, sorry, to the return flow credit.
But could Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, I think, you know, relative to implications for the county, two would come to mind. First, continuously investing in our own water reclamation facilities so that water that is being used within the county unincorporated area is treated at the county facility located on the state penitentiary grounds rather than being diverted to the Paseo Real wastewater treatment plant is a way to ensure that the county has greater say over that renewable resource. But secondly, the county is a partner with the city in terms of the return flow pipeline that would deliver treated and reclaimed wastewater to the Rio Grande for, you know, diversion, just, you know, through the Buckman Direct Diversion Project. And that actually entitles, if it comes to fruition, the county to a share of the city's San Juan Chama project water. So those are two projects or two ways in which, one, the second one, we're working with the city actively to, again, have access to return flow associated with the San Juan Chama project water, which might not be the technical term in terms of return flow with the state engineer. But secondly, continuously investing in our own wastewater reclamation treatment capacity so that, you know, wastewater isn't being diverted to Paseo Real. But I don't disagree that that too can be part of the conversation as we discuss water at the Water Summit. But I hope that this preliminary information is useful to you.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. No, no further questions.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you very much. I think I had heard a statistic to Commissioner Johnson's that I think 7% we would be eligible for because that's, that is dependent. That may be sort of like the, the scope of that with the return flow aspect to that. The, the place that I would, we have lots of concerns in, in my district, and I'm sure it's in all the districts, about groundwater contamination from all sorts of sources. But the one that sort of pops up the most is from septics. And so it's nice to see in here and in your presentation that you're looking at septic, you know, both in cataloging them or creating a spreadsheet of some sort of, you know, whether it's in GIS or, and so on. But I guess my question is, is what sort of best practices can we start looking at? Somebody brought up to me a concept that in places with high water tables, that they require annual inspections of, of septic tanks. Well, that may not be popular, but that may be a best practice. And it'd be interesting for us to understand what all of those situations and best practices are so that we can sort of judge them and say, hey, is this something we want to start looking at? And if people are using 80-year-old septic systems, maybe that's time for them to get them inspected and to understand whether they are, those septic systems need to be relined or pumped out more regularly. What are the best practices, basically, of, in terms of inspection and safety, protecting the groundwater? Could we look at to implement protecting our groundwater? Is that like pumping clean every two years? You know, I'm just throwing things out there. As, you know, what is the risk assessment? If we're seeing contamination in certain areas, can we trace it back to certain things? Or, you know, is it from, you know, barnyard animals that are living on top of the land or is it from people's septic systems? And so just trying to understand where those contaminations are coming from and if the septic systems are culpable for this. But I appreciate the work you guys are doing. This is great to sort of have that in-house brain trust looking at all of these things. And I look forward to the Water Summit.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. You appreciate it sincerely.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and the, and the Commission. And our next WPAK monthly meeting is the 14th of August. We've already started circulating the draft agenda. Of course, County Water Summit will be on there and, and we still have room for a few more items properly. So.
Thank you. Thank you sincerely.
August 14.
Excellent. On to matters from the county manager of miscellaneous updates.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. Have a few updates as follows. You know, first, applications for the backyard composting program are currently open. Applications are accepted on a first-come, first-served basis and are available online or in-person at county offices in Santa Fe, Town of Edgewood, and Pawke. The deadline to apply is, is August 27th. Second, we have a deadline of this Friday for interested individuals to submit applications and letters of interest to serve on the Independent Salary Commission that the board created by resolution earlier this year to provide advice to the board relative to local elected official salaries. Would encourage, the board and Sarah will be sending out a reminder of the criteria and areas of expertise that the resolution targets. So that if you do know any individuals that you think would be good and fit, one of the criteria, please do encourage them to apply. In that same vein, and looking forward to September of this year, all five members of the county's Ethics Board have terms that will be expiring. So we will be actively recruiting Ethics Board members. And again, would encourage individual commissioners to likewise encourage interested folks to apply to serve on the Ethics Board. Secondly, we did receive word orally today that it appears as if our congressionally-directed spending request to U.S. Senator Ben Ray Lujan for funding for a trauma-informed permanent supportive housing project has passed out of the Senate Appropriations Committee and will move further along in the appropriation process. Finally, this is more a reminder for the public that the public hearing on the conditional use permit application for the AES/Rancho Viejo Solar Project will be held on Monday, August 11th, starting at 9:00 a.m., and will continue on Tuesday, August 12th, starting at 10:00 a.m. Again, the first day of the public hearing is limited to presentations by county staff, the applicants, and parties withstanding. Public comment, oral public comment, that is, will be taken on day two of the public hearing. Written comments can be submitted in advance. The deadline for them to be received is Thursday, July 31st, so that all parties have an opportunity to review those written comments and address them as they see fit in the public hearing. And also it gives time for the board to review those comments as well. In terms of in-person or virtual live public comment, pre-registration is required. And there is a existing webpage that has been set up to allow folks to pre-register. And we encourage everybody who's interested in this matter to participate robustly. Finally, we have reserved all the conference rooms at both downtown county offices for overflow viewing areas. And we've also reserved the Zia Ballroom at El Dorado Hotel to the extent that individuals don't want to watch the proceedings, you know, virtually at their home or other locations. Again, we will have those viewing options available here at county administrative buildings as well as the Zia Ballroom at the El Dorado Hotel. That's it for my updates. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Matters from the Commission? I'd like to go first. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see. So we haven't met for a while, but July was also a little bit of an, I feel like there were fewer meetings somehow, which was pretty miraculous. I did have I did have a discussion with a team from Colorado about how the county works on affordable housing. Denise Benavides was extremely helpful during that meeting explaining to them the county's various programs and resources for providing affordable housing. This is a group that is interested in looking at developing affordable housing in New Mexico. And I got the impression that they were impressed with the county's offerings and expertise in that area. So that was earlier this month. Moving along the month, I attended the Chris St. Vincent Regional Cancer Center grand opening. I saw a couple of you Commissioners there, but I don't think we got to chatting. But it was a nice event. As someone whose family was affected by cancer, this is an important resource for Santa Fe because when my father was struggling with it, we had to leave town essentially to get the high quality of care. So this will go a long way for that. And it was nice to see the community come out for that. Let's see. I've been having some discussions with Public Power New Mexico and thinking about how we can diversify our electrification portfolio. And I appreciate the help of Jacqueline Beam and Leandro Cordova for those discussions. And I also attended the county picnic last Friday, which was great. I went through all of the stations. I'm not sure if our team is doing that great for health and wellness. But I'm not sure Commission Impossible Five is doing that great. But you know what? We should, we're doing our best. That's all. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you for that last tote. Next, Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was, you know, when you have an extra week between meetings, you get an extra week of events to report about. And one of the most fun ones was up in Chimayo. They had one of their monthly little baby fiestas. And this one was a tractor-based agricultural one. And it was aptly named Alamacina. And it was very cool. And they had some very cool old tractors on display. And the community was out. It was very, very hot. And there was a great image of two people sitting under a tree and one was facing north on one side of the tree in the shade. And the tree actually marks the line between Santa Fe County and Rio Arriba County. So it looked like these two people were protecting the border between Rio Arriba and Santa Fe County. It was just a great image. We had the Buckaroo Ball this past weekend. And for those of you that don't know about the Buckaroo Ball, this is a 30-year-old organization. This was the 30th year. And the Buckaroo Ball is an endowed organization that donates around $100,000 a year to local nonprofits based on a theme. This year was on mental health and they donated $25,000 to the Sky Center, Cooking With Kids, Consuelos Place, and Girls on the Run. And it was a very well-attended event. And I have lots of friends who were there and who support it, and it's a great organization. There was also the Low Rider Event on the Plaza a couple of weeks ago, and that's always one of my fun times. It was great to see cars from all over, from Albuquerque, Espanola, Chimayo, and all here on the Plaza. Moving Arts had their showcase, their film over at the Lenzik last week. That was sold out. They were very proud of themselves and deserved it. They sold out the Lenzik. And they did a performance and they had a 30-minute video about their organization. And I really, if you don't know them, you should. And they do great work for the Espanola Valley and for all of us in Santa Fe County. There were folks from, you know, members of Tusquehueblos that were there that I didn't know were taking advantage of those programs. And so it was really great to see folks from further than the Espanola Valley being a part of that. There was the Santa Fe International Film Festival Gala about a week ago that highlighted the work of Godfrey Reggio as well as the Film Institute there. They have a great program with the New York University's NYU's Film School, and they've been bringing students from the Film School out here. And it was great to see and learn about those projects up there. As I mentioned, Disability Pride, I was a part of that. And then also the AIA, American Institutes of Architects, had their summer party and talked about some of the work that they're doing in placemaking and building a better fabric for Santa Fe in general. And I think that they could provide us with some guidance to work on our community development plans. That was it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes?
Yes, just real quick, because I was on vacation last week and I didn't think about the county at all last week. The Spur Ranch Road Group is just, just a reminder, they're going to apply for us to adopt their road. And so that may come forward in the next few months for us to consider. I did attend the Cancer Center opening, grand opening. I saw Commissioner Johnson from way across the room. We did not talk. Could not get even close to each other. And then finally, I'm really looking forward to working with Commissioner Kokari Stone on supportive housing, permanent supportive housing, trauma-informed care. That's great news that we're, Ben Ray Lujan's money may support that. I think we will form some sort of work group involving us and the city councils so we can get the city involved in this as well as Enquorum and others. You know, the city is obviously a key partner because it probably has to be located within the city. And with that, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I'll try to make a more interesting rather than a litany of things I did, but, because I know I get kind of boring about that. So this is called From Local to Naco. Not local, local, but local, like here, okay? I continue to do cafecitos with different areas of District Two. And a shout out to Kimberly Hill, if the team's still, the fabulous liaisons are still back there, legendary. Last week on Friday, early in the morning, I met with some of the residents living on the Santa Fe River Trail. And I want to thank Mike Hart and Lieutenant Brandle for joining us there. There's been a lot of excitement about the River Trail. How many of you have seen the amazing, fabulous, huge bridge? It's like amazing. So, Leandro's shaking, thank you for your work as well. But there's also some issues because nothing, nothing new comes without disturbing. The people have been there for many of their generations, so. And, you know, transient's going through in the middle of the night, ATVs, the curbs not being wide enough. So Mike Hart gave a great communications update to the people that live in the area. We had, I think, at least 11 folks walking at 8:00 a.m. there to join the meeting. And the good news, things will be resolved as the process continues. And Lieutenant Brandle really encouraged people to call around the ATVs because that's just creating a lot of havoc. And of all my community meetings, homelessness, the concerns about the people who are without housing comes up across the board. That gives me to Las Campanas HOA, because I ran on, you know, local people matter, everybody matters. And that's what I continue, whether you live in one of our HUD housing or in Las Campanas or Aguafre Village. But Las Campanas HOA is very interested in working with us in bridging a bike lane. And I need to investigate this with Public Works as well and look at that map where we still own the property, but they're concerned about the safety of the bikers. And so we were looking at, not just people in Las Campanas use that, but people from the whole county. So it could be a way where we look at a long-term plan and maybe even getting Palaton as a corporate contributor to help build that bridge where people are really at risk of being hit. They're also concerned about the Caja del Rio, that's something Commissioner, former Commissioner Anna Hansen worked on in the shooting range. It was in the paper. I was asked to weigh in on that. And we need to actually bring, and I'll be working with Kim, to try to bring folks together to discuss the devil in the details with BLM is proposing with that. So I welcome other Commissioners to join. I think it affects Commissioner Bustamante's area. Casa Alegre met with HOA lead there for Cafecito. And again, Urban Alchemy, the contract out with the city to take over the management of Pete's Place will start August 1st. So we're all kind of waiting to see. We want people to be successful. We also want to learn from any mistakes. But there's going to be a September neighborhood meeting. And I know Councilor Alma Castro's invited. But again, every area in the community in District Two is concerned about homelessness. And I think it's something that I'm really excited about rallying around with Commissioner Hughes and others. So that's local. And I met with Homewise. I'm trying to develop more of a relationship to understand what they do. Met with their policy folks. And that then got me involved with the livability cohort. So I'm pretty excited about that because it brings in speakers and consultants the night before. And then the following day, we have a luncheon. And that includes the Housing Planning Commission with the city, a couple of city counselors. I was glad to see Commissioner Green on that. And I learned a lot. And I think we share a lot of governmental challenges on the bandwidth of authority around codes and sustainable development. But it also gives us windows of opportunity to leverage our positions. And now going to another Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area, we had our, it's one of the committees I sit on, but the retreat was at Los Luceros. And those in listening and for the public record, I really want to encourage visitors and quote-unquote "local educational tourism" to Los Luceros. And invite everybody to the Rio Grande Sky Fiesta. Last year, they had 3,000 attendees. And I don't know if it's possible the county can be a sponsor in any way or we participate in any way. It's October 25th and 26th. And they have hot air balloons. And Los Luceros is this traditional land and community still. It's what Los Poblanos might have been at one time. And it's so authentic and I didn't want to leave because it's so peaceful. And they do programming and I really want to support them. Gloria does programming. They take the Mica land and earth to create pottery. So I'm actually going to join. It's Gabriela Silva, Micaceous Pottery Pastels. She does remedios, scrapbooking. So I just want to encourage everyone to join in on that. Now going to Naco at the national level. It was an honor to be there with Commissioner Bustamante, many folks from New Mexico Counties 33. It was my first summer participation in this national conference. And I think for me, it's a great opportunity to get involved with the governing body as well as the National Association Hispanic officials. I was able to get involved with them at the January legislative meeting. But what was so cool about it is I got to tour the New River Wellness Center and recovery-based housing that the new mayor, and I shared it with Commissioner Hughes today, she implemented this and they renovated a 188,000 square foot facility in eight weeks. And her motto is, let's do proof of concept before we have everything. And I shared with the county manager, I was very impressed. And it gave a vision for what we can do in Santa Fe. So I just wanted to share that and I left pretty jazzy about it. Thanks, Phil. From local to Naco.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And I'm going to go ahead and start with the Naco. From loca to naco. And it should be able to stand. I didn't get it on the airplane. And what I'll make clear is that I paid for it myself to have it shipped and they crunched it. They didn't put cushions around it. But the thing that I will say is why this felt important to bring back. And there were people who were bringing them, some people were driving with them, and then some people abandoned them and the FedEx built the shop. Ours had Commissioners from throughout the state who were signing it. But the thing that mattered the most to me, and I'm going to say, in 2001, we had a Commissioner, I remember when he became the nationally-elected president of Naco. And that was Javier Gonzalez. And Commissioner Gonzalez was a leader in this country. And this particular Naco was Naco at 90. So they had a lot of memorabilia. They had a book that they had made with pictures of past presidents and U.S. presidents who represented the country. The thing that happened with our former Commissioner, Mr. Gonzalez, were the number of people who said, "New Mexico, Santa Fe? Did you know Gonzalez?" And it started literally the first night I had dinner with a group of people there. The thing that happened and what made Javier Gonzalez so important to Naco, and then for those of us with Hispanic ancestry, he's been the first Hispanic president of Naco and the last. But the thing that he did and that everyone, without exception, who remembered and worked with him back in that day, was that when he got elected, his agenda was about rural America, right? How are counties going to support the rurality of, you know, America? So it was rural, rural, rural. And then we had 9/11. And when it was 9/11, and this was told to me more than once, they said, "We pivoted." The whole organization, his leadership took the whole focus to how do counties address national security? And it left me in chills and tears. It was wow. He was tactical. Now, I don't know if you all remember, he was young. He was probably in his 30s when he did that. But he was a U.S.-recognized, top-notch county official who took the nation's county operations across the country and said, "How are counties going to help support national security?" And there were so many people who recognized that. So it was really powerful and I just couldn't see leaving without this. Now, what FedEx is going to do to fix what their shipping cost was, as the manager knows and said, "I can't justify that." And I said, "Neither can I, and I'm not telling anybody at my house, but I'm doing it." So it was more about bringing something back that was really important. If not to just Santa Fe, we had people who were so excited from across the state sign it. So that was what we, what I was very moved by at Naco. But the other thing about Naco was I did go to the Roberts Rules of Order and guess what? We're doing it just fine. So I'm very happy to say that. We do have an opportunity to revisit our structure. There's nothing in our, in our resolution that says, in its 2009-2, that says we're doing anything wrong whatsoever. The concern about the order of things, we can revisit to make sure that people can give public comment before we hear the action items. That's something for all of us to consider. And that would take, you know, some modification to a resolution, but we're not incorrect in doing that. And I think it's important to say. The next thing is that at Naco, we learned, and I did go to the executive committee meetings, though I'm not on the executive committee, but I have a very close friend who runs Naco on that executive committee. And counties now, because of the, I'm going to use the word lancing, the lancing of our Medicaid and SNAP, and there was a group of people, and you knew that we were, Naco is not partisan. And I am not speaking in a partisan way right now. But I think it's important to recognize that it is an incredibly partisan issue. And I was not embarrassed to bring it up and I will make no apologies for doing so. I stood up in public forum, we're a very large group of people, and brought up the fact that now counties will, if we're going to continue to provide those services that have now been cut by the federal government, and it's right there on a big old chart, 75% now goes to the local government. And the local government will either increase taxes or do what we have to do to make sure things like SNAP still exist in our communities. 25% is for the federal aspect of that. There are a roomful of mostly gentlemen who acknowledge that we're doing this and then people who put their hands in, their head in their hand after they realized what they had done to themselves. they had done to themselves, and I spoke about voting against one's own interest and why we would do that. I just feel like that's important to say for the record. Why would we ever vote against our own interests? Because locally, we will pay for it in Santa Fe County in the long run if we expect to keep those services available to our community members. That being said, I am working with some external entities who are part of the establishment of the TDR program. The TDR program is clearly not working. We have a lot of ideas as to what's going to make it work, but what, one thing that I ran on, and I always appreciate when Commissioner Kikari Stone says, "I ran on this issue." I absolutely ran on the issue of the availability of local food. It is immoral. It is unethical to not leave land for food to be grown. I'm grateful that we can spend a lot of money on open space, but we're not spending a dime on making sure that agricultural land stays productive. Locally grown food is healthier for people. We don't need to have food that ripens on trucks. I have been doing this work now for better than 20 years. Ever since I left the laboratory, it is the work I did in Rio Arriba County. We have irritable land that does not need to be developed because people want to live under the canopy, and the water's right there. That's where things need to be kept if the landowners wish to have it purchased and ensure that future generations can grow food. I'm not going to be shy about that anymore. There were people who want to see this happen. I don't know if I have the, I will ask my fellow Commissioners to consider that, but it's very important. Our governor is paying farmers to not grow food, and that's the kind of thing that's, let's just shoot the bottom of our, no, let's shoot the top of our feet. When you shoot yourself in the foot, what part? Do you do go like that? You go like, I mean, I don't know, but we're shooting our feet. We're shooting, I don't know, we're shooting at the same time. Bottom line is, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. We have to do this for future generations. When we talk about water availability, it's not a 100-year plan. I'm 60-some years old. 100 years isn't that big. It's like, guess what? You know, there are people in this room who knew a relative who lived to be 104 or whatever. Fact of the matter is, if we're going to go to those values that really spoke to sustainability, tradition is the route to sustainability, and it has always been for many of our native counterparts to be about seven generations ahead. So if I'm putting you to sleep with this, for the record, remember, seven gen ahead is not something I'm making up. It's about how do we make sure that the way we treat our environment, our community, our people, is about assuring that seven generations from now will have the ability to live, grow, and eat where they are. So that is something that I am obviously very passionate about. It's what we're doing with our Water Summit. When people say, "Where is the water coming from and where will it be?" Not in 100 years, but seven generations from now? That's the kind of question we need to have answered. So for that, I have really nothing else. I do look to speaking with our manager's office, our county manager's office, to adjust our agenda, and I am so grateful that we are here on to the next matters. Do we have any other elected officials who would like to speak? Oh, and I'm sorry, since we're the managers essentially, and we have not logged any of our workouts, and I committed to sort of leading, I was very reluctant, you have to acknowledge that, but even though we're supposed to have given them every week, and two of us were not even in the coun, well, we were in the country, we're somewhere in Philadelphia, we still get to add our stuff. Yeah, like, I climbed the rocky steps, what the heck? You know, somebody needs to know that, and I stood there by the statue, I was dying, but the fact is, I'm going to put that together, I'm going to ask that at the end of this month, and if we get any flock from anybody, just know, we wave that wand, my friends. No, just kidding, just kidding, just kidding. Anyway, let's just try to get our numbers in at the end of the month. Is there anyone online? No? And I'll send an email, just like I promised I'd send the first one. Right? All right, we'll do it. No one online. On to Matters from the County Attorney, who is online, who has been out ill, and we're grateful that he's not here, but we will go into a closed session if I have a motion to do so.
Chair, Chair Bustamante, I can read the form of motion, if y'all can hear me all right. So we're looking, I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss two items that set forth in the agenda. The first is a performance evaluation of the county manager, and the basis for going into executive session to discuss that item would be Section 1015-1-H2 of the Open Meetings Act, limited personnel matters. And then the second item is a petition requesting the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Fe County adopt an ordinance declaring Area 1B to be part of the traditional historic community of Aguafria, or to adopt an ordinance declaring Area 1B to be retained solely in Santa Fe County. And the basis, there are, there are two bases for going into a closed executive session to discuss that item. Board deliberations and administrative executive, administrative adjudicatory proceedings under Section 1015-1-H3 of the Open Meetings Act, or alternatively, to discuss threatened or threatened litigation in which Santa Fe County is or may become a participant under Section 1015-1-H7 of the Open Meetings Act. And as a friendly reminder, this does need to be voted on in a roll call vote.
We have a motion and a roll call vote. Do we have a motion to?
Whoops, sorry. I will make the motion to go into executive session to discuss the two items brought up by the county attorney.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Green. We have a second from Commissioner Hughes.
Are we going to adjourn from the executive session?
Okay.
Can we adjourn from the executive session?
Oh, shall we adjourn from the executive session?
There is no item on the agenda that we can come back to, so.
Yeah. Chair and Commissioner Hughes, that could be considered a friendly amendment to Commissioner Green's motion there, if everyone's in agreement on that.
The amendment to adjourn right after the executive session has been accepted by Commissioner Green, made by Commissioner Hughes. Can we have a roll call vote, please? We will be adjourning right after the meeting. Do we have to make a motion to adjourn? We just did.
Did.
For the roll call, Adam, Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kikari Stone?
Yes.
And Chair Camila Bustamante?
Yes.
Thank you.